Hello. Hello from Maine.
One second. Okay. Good evening. Let's begin with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin meeting of Sag Harbor's Village Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. Before we begin, I'd just like to say make a brief statement about our purpose here. We're all volunteers on this board and we give freely of our time, which can be considerable as we review applications without fear or favor, as the expression goes. We do so for no other reason than love of this unique village. Certainly, there are other towns by the water with good restaurants and other attractions that appeal to visitors. But precious few, if any, are like Sag Harbor. It's nothing short of miraculous that such a collection of 18th, 19th, and early 20th century structures managed to survive through the centuries. As stewards of these architectural treasures, it falls on us to protect them and the character of the village overall through carefully researched review of existing structures as well as the new. This takes time, so we ask for your patience while we work to get it right. I also ask that you try to be concise in both your questions and your comments so that we can commit the same level of energy to the last speaker as we do to the first. And that you be respectful. George Washington said it best in his first rule of civility. Every action in company ought to be with some sign of respect to those that are present. Let's do our best to make George proud. Okay. Minutes. May I have a motion to approve? Have we, first of all, have we all had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, may I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's begin with with old business, 12 Amity Street.
Good evening, my name is John Vettis. I represent the with the future of the last party and we're here to support and future of the settlement. I just want to make some preparatory remarks when the report comes up and presents to you some of the changes that we have made. I know Mr. Studeroff was concerned that the front door was being narrowed so we could go back to the original width. I also know there is some concern that the front door was being all the way forward as Amelia will explain and as she put in her memo. We're actually, the front door will be recessed as it is now. But there are a couple of things that I do want to add. So we did see Zach's memo and we do have a response to that. But one of the things that's, I was hard to see Zach's memo is he realizes, I think, and I don't want paraphrasing, I don't want to put it, towards this now fourth, you know, Zach. Actually, different to be able to have the historic consultant. But one of the things is that, and it goes into my sending you a copy of the zoning board appeals decision at some of the case law that I found applicable on August 11th. Was that the fact that this has been allowed by the zoning board of appeals to be enclosed or turned into habitable space is of course the zoning board appeals has established the zoning for the property and that that enclosure will take place. But one of the things that was interesting was that, and Zach states in this letter, sometimes this is not an unusual thing for the glass to come in in the wintertime, screens to come in in the summertime. In the middle days, they used to do it by, you know, each panels would come in and out. But we're doing something that's a different take on that. But essentially, the same thing is going to happen. There'll be climate controlled habitable space there. So we do hope that you've taken a look at Selvador Steel's both response and further explanation of what's going on here, which includes an attempt to document some of the history of the property. One thing that's important to note is that this front porch is not, some example, I think the best example that I've used, you see it on the east end, you'd have a true colonial house that doesn't have any padament above it or any front porch, any enclosure. And someone would put a roof on it and then with the wooden columns and you'd have four of the porch sitting on, you know, with the with rafters, four joints and rafters sitting on the ground. But in fact, that's not what you have here. The, as we demonstrated clearly to you, the basement of this house is goes under that, under that porch. Your closure has allowed us to enclose. So it's really, you have glass or screens in there. It still is an integral part of the house. And not, I can see if you were trying to preserve a force that had, didn't have any means of enclosure or was just a force but open on three sides that had been grafted onto a colonial house. As you'll sometimes see later, they should be people wanting to be able to get out, get out of the rain or maybe enjoy the front porch. But that's not the issue here. This is, you'll see the basement goes all the way through the, through the house. But other than that, I'd like Amelia to take, take, take you through what we've presented with some options. And again, even though the options stand willing to listen to your discussions as we must. I, as I say in my letter, the zoning has been established, including the setback to habitable space and the area to habitable space has been established as the zoning for the property by the property where reasonable of the ZBA decision. But nevertheless, of course, I wouldn't wish to say anything else. The application is for subject to this point's reasonable exercise of aesthetic purpose. Amelia?
So, um, some of the picture I have to take here is the freezing porch. And what we're proposing is now a little bit simpler than as long as in the last proposal that was submitted. We've, we're proposing to and to place windows instead of screens exactly where the screens are in the left and center base of the porch. And then in the right bay, we're proposing to take the front porch and bringing it halfway forward. So there's still a recessed entry and open porch now where you're opening the front door. And we have a few different options for the windows or the glazing panels.
I think there's sort of one of those A two oh two, two oh two, there are one, two, and three, are they?
Yes, we have them here and it's
We have them here.
So, option A is you'll see the wider entry way than there was last one. And there are similar windows paired double hongs where the screen panels were. That may be submitted today.
No, that was submitted sometime, that was about a week ago. What we have in front of me is for ease, what we did is we showed the proposal as it was at the last meeting and then we showed the three options. So you can see how we wind it, why in the open, the door, the entrance.
Yeah, so we were, we were in agreement that that was looking a little bit inch at the front door. So we wind it back up so the left side of the front door is existing, is in line with the existing columns of course. So column one, there's four. And then we have a couple of different options with double hongs and fixed panels. Just existing for reference here. I see, it'll read somewhat more open than a previous version because of that larger entry open porch and the left part will read as it pleased.
Maybe you could show it if it's okay, the floor class, maybe you can see how the the front entrance door is still set back. Then it was hard to read that before, so we tried to dimension it.
What is it?
Yeah, so you can see where the door currently stands and where we're proposing it. And then the line of the existing screen. Where those doors are, but here, but the screen.
So you still have the while the entrance is being brought somewhat forward, it's still the side panels is being brought somewhat forward by office. Being a for a top, and for so recessed.
So there will be a door where the screen door is currently? No, that'll be open and it'll be a recessed front door.
Yes.
Okay.
As it is now.
As it is now, beyond the screens.
Not quite yet inside.
Well, that's a miss, that's a mischaracterization. The front door now is in the wall of the front of the house. It's not somewhat recessed from the front porch. The front door and two flanking windows are now in the front wall of the house, which continues to a second story where the dormer projects. Is that correct? So to characterize to characterize the proposed door, front door, as being somewhat recessed, this is inaccurate. The front door is where it ought to be. It's in the front wall of the house. And in front of that is a porch. Is a porch, which originally, whenever it was built, is immaterial. And whatever supported it originally is immaterial. It is a porch and a porch by definition to begin with is an open structure that's attached to one of the walls of the house. Over time, people find it convenient seasonally to introduce screens, shades, et cetera, to take advantage of that quasi outdoor space. And then when we have the capability of creating storm windows with large huge glass, we find an even more creative way of using that outdoor space seasonally by putting storm windows on it, which are opable and removable in order to inhabit this outdoor space in colder climates.
But Zach, once you, once you put glass there and they get climate control, it by definition is part of habitable space under your zoning law.
But it is habitable seasonal.
Yeah.
Yes. And the storm, totally. And the storm windows or screens or shelters or hanging shades or whatever. Whatever has modified this outdoor structure, which is attached, in this case, the front elevation, is still a porch. It is not a fully enclosed heated, nor does the door that enters it approach the front of it. What you're proposing is a front, a new front wall. It would be the same thing as coming to this board and requesting a shed roofed addition to the front of the house. That's what's being requested.
Well, that's fine, since you want to characterize it with
Well, it's not fine because it's not appropriate aesthetic.
I will, I, I, I have to say this, I will tell you unequivocally. We're going to take this front porch overhang, whatever it is you want to say, and fully climate control it. That's what the zoning board of appeals allowed us to do. So if you're going to try in fact, there's irony along. If I could deny that, let us know, deny it, we'll get a riverhead.
But one board doesn't override the other.
No, 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 no. If you read the case law, you will find that once the zoning, please let me finish. I've only been a land use lawyer for 44 years. A municipal lawyer, former town attorney. Been doing nothing but land use and land use litigation for a long time. Once the zoning board of appeals said that we could enclose and fully climatically control that area, that that ship is sailed. So if you're going to tell me that you're going to try to prevent us from fully climate controlling that area, this toy, I don't think any of this is fine.
I'm sorry, I raised my hand and I shouldn't.
I don't think any of this is fine.
Okay, let me interrupt, allow me, allow me, allow me to interrupt Bill. John, I'm sorry, John. It is my understanding that the DBA decision in this matter is not binding on our board. Am I correct?
I hesitate to use the phrase not binding. The way I would characterize it is there's different jurisdictions. The ZBA has the jurisdiction over the dimensional regulations. If the porch has dimensioned out and has used as proposed is, that's within the ZBA's purview. You also have the building inspector additions to habitable space, gross floor area, things like that. That's intense bailiwick. Our jurisdiction is the B H A R is the aesthetics and the appropriateness as it relates to the historic district.
Yes.
So we need to all look at those as different buckets and kind of silo those. We need to look at this application in terms of the aesthetics and the historic appropriateness and look agnostic of the use of the porch.
Exactly, and that is our job here tonight.
Which is why I said in my letter that the zoning board of appeals decision, which allows me to fully climate control this aside, I am of course still subject to your aesthetic concerns or your aesthetic jurisdiction unequivocally, unequivocally.
Not just ours, but the Department of the Interior.
Yeah, so
Because of the historic designation of the district.
That's the law, that's not being your code. But I understand that you use that.
So our code is based upon
Is based on
Promulgated by the
Department of the Interior.
Our major standards, right? So I'm simply saying that what is being proposed is literally enclosing. Whether you're recessing the proposed front door, two inches or six feet is immaterial. It is essentially transforming. And I'm sure the ZBA thinks this is fine because they're not concerned.
We have different concerns.
It's no longer a porch. It's an extended room that's fully enclosed and it will look like that is the point. And it's supposed to look like a porch. As long as there are screen panels hanging and storm panels, it's still a porch. But the minute you transform that front wall, even if you recess the actual door a bit, you are transforming that former porch into a, into an actual room. And it looks like that. And that's the aesthetic issue that's reported. If there were a way of you're transforming the porch without changing the way it looks, then there wouldn't be the concern that we have here. You know, we have over 450 contributing houses or someone in the district. And I would say that easily 100 of them have porches.
Easily, so if I'm being exact, yes, would it be preferable from your point of view? Because this is an advising account, would it be preferable from your point of view? And this may be where we have to go, like that's, this is the existing. Would you prefer to simply parrot this fenestration, but put glass?
I'm sorry.
Would you prefer that we essentially parrot this existing fenestration?
Uh huh.
And put, and just put glass?
But what is the middle that's not fuzzy and faded? What's the middle that
That's existing, so these are, you know, it's just the line, the lines.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is the middle, which now has screened panels?
Yes.
Uh huh.
So what we were trying to do, since, you know, in my mind anyway, panels of glass this large look postmodern suburban, yeah, but what happened? Zach, we were trying to, we were trying to introduce some millions or muttons in there, whatever you want. But if the, if the thought is to keep this fenestration the same, however, that this would be glass.
Right.
Okay. That's something I'll take back to my life.
That's what, that's what do it. Because what you're proposing is to transform what are visually apparently removable screens or storm units into proper fenestration, six over sixes, whatever. That belongs in the wall of the house, not on the porch. Similarly, those screen panels that flank the doors, the steps. Right? They're clearly not the sort of window door arrangement that someone would build as a permanent feature. They're a conversion for climate purposes of a porch. It still looks like a porch. If you, I would suggest that if you simply transform the screen panels into glazed fixed panels that look purely arable, it'll still look like a porch.
Okay.
And that's what it is.
Let's, let me take that back. Let me take that back.
I mean, that's the difference.
Let's, let me take that back open mind. Because there's no sense going back and forth on this, okay?
That sounds, that sounds reasonable.
That's okay, that's reasonable to go back to the plan.
I mean, does that sound reasonable? It's like, I have one, one to add. So in plan, if it's a porch or if it's a glass room, actually don't object to that, but there's a wall separating what's left of the front porch.
Right.
And the room. It would also have glass, that wall should not be there. That should not, no, that should not be there.
Same with the wall we're talking about. Which it's you indicating
You're talking to the wall with the pocket doors?
Like it's green one right here? Oh. There's a wall above that, which splits the space. Yes.
This, right.
So none of that would be necessary because
But I'm actually throwing down the one out there for you.
Yeah. Let's say they say, I absolutely need that little foyer, that little cante space.
And it's nice actually.
Okay. But then the true objection is that additional wall, like convolutes the whole thing. It's no longer a continuous porch anymore. So one way it's a continuous porch with a bump out. And all of a sudden, you've said, well, CJ says we could blast it in. We'll be like, well, so I don't know what the glass looks like. But that one wall is kind of the faster child parents.
I just want to put it out there and I'm not totally sure which wall we're talking about. Which was a favor for the boards to notice. We, we can't, or we don't have the jurisdiction to look at things which are interior and not visible in the public sphere.
That's not interior, it's exterior. So I will clearly tell you, you've got four steps, you're on a covered porch, you're outside. You turn it to the left, there's a solid wall. That is in our purview. Zach's saying the wall in front of me shouldn't be there at all.
And honestly, doesn't mean that
I'm saying, I might even get into the wall in front of me, but I'm not going to get into the wall to the left. So we don't need for that, that short wall to the left.
It's a, it's a closet, it's a closet, it's gonna take the closet away.
Yeah.
Did you understand that Amelia? Am I understanding you correctly, Zach?
Yes, also closet is a big help.
Okay. I know, but
Yeah. Alright.
So I want to see the revision.
Okay, would, would, may I ask, would the door be where it is now, the front door to the house?
The front door, as I understand what Zach and I were talking about, the front door will be where it is if it's going to be screened.
And the actual front door of the house would be, will be where it is, yes, that's
For, for historic preservation purposes, I believe a case could be made that it should remain a screen. Well, I'm, I'm, I've done some research and I'd just like to go through it on the record. So, front porches tell a story about the social fabric of 20th century America. This is a tight knit village, a walking village. It, you know, having front porches insights neighborly interaction. That, that is a character of the neighborhood. In the early 1900s, sleeping porches became a thing. And that might be a reason why there is this shingled wall in the front of the porch underneath the screens, because then that gives them the privacy while they're sleeping.
Also, why do you want to have, sorry, you have an entry and then the sleeping porch and the two left base? Cause like the sleeping porch could be accessible from, from the inside of the house rather than being like outside.
I mean, I read the, the architect's response and I think many porches were built after the fact. Screened in porches were screened in after the original house was built. So I think it is actually very So I think it, uh, is actually very common to exit through your main door to be on your screen porch. It's not, I think it's more of a new thing that we're melding interior and exterior, exterior, um.
That's fine.
So I'm just gonna finish my thought. So, um, sleeping porches became popular because people needed a daily dose of fresh air, right? Um, Spanish flu happened and people became a lot more aware of germs. They wanted to be outdoors. So going on their front porch gave them that daily dose of fresh air and it was cleaner. By nineteen twenty, porches might have moved to the side of the house because people wanted to be a little more private. By nineteen fifty, porches moved to the back because people wanted extra privacy. And you had to like call to come over instead of just walk up and say hello to your neighbor. So the point I'm trying to make is that by changing this from a screened in porch where history shows us that that was a necessity in the culture of twentieth century America and in the National Register, this is written as a scre- an early twentieth century screened in porch. So we are the Historic Preservation Board of Architectural Review. And I believe that maintaining this screened in porch is maintaining the historic integrity of this structure.
I would understand it, why you would be concerned if someone was going to take a structure where there was, say, a colonial, as I described in the beginning, doesn't have, you know, no one, no one thought of, um, being standing at the front door and being covered by even a short, you know, pediment with the columns on either side. Um, the door was right there, walked right into the, the door. It's like, think of the house or something in Deerfield. They're just right there. But this, the reason I don't think you should be concerned about this being stretched is because foundation of the house runs all the way to the wall of porch. So it's rather unusual that way. Usually when you have a porch, it's sitting, it's, you know, you've got, essentially you've got, there's the floor of the porch and underneath it are, are structural members that are just sitting on the ground. That's not, so I think to the extent that you wanted to, uh, to, uh, you know, make this somewhat unique, you could do that. But we'll, we'll leave you, we'll come back to you. There's, uh, something that. With some glass, maybe we'll take a look at the interior and speech and the minimum we can get rid of that charred.
Motion to adjourn, twelve AM.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, the next meeting is September eleventh. Can we sign my?
Thank you.
Fifteenth John Street.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Charlie Collins for the applicant. So about the last month you were here, I was not able to attend, um, something for me, um, a walk fifteen. We had our, the sort of public forum about a few weeks ago to look through the house, to kind of text your interiors and I issued this report uh, last week and I, I hope you got a chance to review it.
John.
I know there was some question about the windows and the nature of the issue, which was, we strongly believe has been caused by the HVAC system and condensation at first. On the single pane windows is causing a dampness to part of the interior of the house, or the window sills and running down and damaging the finishes of the house. Basically, if that wasn't happening, we would not be here. They would not be replacing any windows, but because of this issue and it's costing my clients a lot already money, the fire department, the police department only arrived for quick alarms. So we're really trying to alleviate as much as possible the, the problems that are causing, that the windows are causing at this house. Uh, after speaking with Zach, you had a nice visit.
So let me interrupt. The windows are causing the alarms to trigger?
Well, there's alarms on the windows and then the water is getting into the system. It's false alarm, it's not. It's not, so I don't know how often that, that has been happening. Yeah. So it's not an ideal situation for first responders to have to arrive for some, some windows. But we were there, we spoke with the sort of consultant and issued a report. He offered a, we, you know, ideally we'd replace all the windows, we're already putting in an order. We would just get a bunch of all the same windows so we have a uniformity throughout the house. But he offered two compromises that he felt would both alleviate the issues at hand and honor the historic nature of the house and the windows. And after speaking with the clients and the, uh, John Hummel's representative, Liz Marchmont, I mean, the, they would, of the two examples or the two options, they would like to proceed with option one if the board is a metal. But option one is remove the window on first floor from the dining room, den, small windows. To put in new, uh, aged windows with thermal paint glass to, cause that's the, the, the most used area for them. And then upstairs, there's a window in the bedroom and a bathroom. And replace, and leave those as is. And those are the most visible windows as well, from the street, from West Henry and from John Street, when you're watching, there's a big, you know, a credit hedge in the front. So you really don't see the lower of the house. You do see the upper, so we figured if you're gonna honor the historic, that are the ones that would show the most for people in the neighborhood.
Zach.
So I want to apologize to the board for getting a little ahead of you, because I'm only advising you, I'm not coming.
Yes, that's why we're turning to you.
Solutions. So, so I just wanted to say, under the circumstances being there and all, um, a couple of things we should bear in mind. Most of the windows have already been replaced with very effective from the street, two over two or whatever the configuration was and currently is. They're new windows, they're thermopane windows and they're performing properly because that's what they're built to do.
Right.
So what we're really dealing with are, for whatever reason, because current owners did not install those windows, they hired the house and these were all replaced. Some of the windows were left unchanged. And those are the windows, as well as some of the new windows are single pane and they're demonstrating the same condition. So there are some new ones, oddly. So I'm just saying, this is all within the context of a Victorian era house in which the windows have been largely replaced already, although there are some still surviving. And I felt that the board would want the owner to preserve as many of those that are still there as practicable, to simply serve as an example for somebody like me or any of you fifty years from now. There's still a window there that helps us to date that house because these are
Yeah.
originals to the building. Uh, but understanding that so many of the windows have already been replaced, it seemed that that was a practical solution as long as some preservation of what was there was, was acceptable to, to the board. And so there, therein lies my recommendation.
So you'd like to go with option one?
Yeah, of, of the two that were suggested or, you know, offered.
Why not just replace them all and get thermopane? Cause at this point, you're just bastardizing all the windows. So who cares?
Well.
Well, but as I said, for someone to go like me, who's looked at the baseboards and the mantelpieces and the door post and your balusters, which are put in a flat down and all kinds of interesting architectural features. It's like what we look for is like what survives of the original house. So in this case.
Yeah, but then the other thing you could do is just make all of them historically correct and then the house will.
So they'd be new.
Yeah.
Well, then they wouldn't be old. What I'm saying is.
Well, no, 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 you could, you can, you can build replicas, right?
Well, that's what they have. What I'm saying.
No, no, they're bad replica. I saw, I saw the ones upstairs.
Okay. Whether they're good or bad, they're, they're new.
No, no, the point, the point is, so either, either replace them. So either replace them with thermopanes, right?
Yeah.
That don't look historically correct, never will, because you can never get the muttons and mullions to be as thin as the original historically correct ones. Or build historically new correct ones. With very thin muttons and mullions, single pane.
Okay, so let's just say there are fifty windows in the house and forty of them have already been replaced with thermopanes.
Yeah.
Which are reasonably good replicas, not as good as they might be, et cetera.
Hmm. Yeah.
Well, those exist on the house and so I don't feel that this board can suggest that a homeowner remove fabric from their house, which would be these existing thermopane windows to come up with ones that look better.
No, no, so.
Right. So those are all in place, okay. So what we're talking about are actually the nineteenth century window sashes, which are, whether you like them or not, doesn't matter. They're original to the house and for someone who investigates, which we will all be doing in fifty years, we'll continue to investigate these houses. And if we allow this particular house to lose all the rest of the original sashes, it won't have any originals. And it doesn't matter if they've got skinny muttons or fatlands, because it's new, it's all new stuff. What survives there are examples of the original windows and what I'm suggesting is we try to find a way to preserve as many of those on the house as possible.
I get what you're saying.
Yes.
I would recommend just going the step forward and just going with all thermos- thermopane. Who cares if in fifty years we find one original window?
Well, I care. Because when I go to a house, I look for it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I care too.
For original. Because they will, and here's the point, they will always, if, if there are examples saved and documented in the past. The window in the dining room on the west facade, whatever it is, is preserved, that's original. That becomes the prototype for future work.
This is my opinion.
If all original fabric is taken out, there is no prototype.
This is my opinion. I'm of the opinion if, if you're gonna swim the channel, don't turn around. So I would rip them all out and I would put historically correct windows. That's just, but that's just me.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't just, I, I, I would agree with Zach's recommendation. I think
Yeah.
keeping as many of the historic windows and if the owners are willing to do that. I mean, they're coming here saying that they will do that and you've recommended it. I, I don't quite get a sense of how many historic windows will remain, however.
There'll, there'll be two, there's, um.
There're only two?
Yeah, so there's only six remaining total and four of them are on the first floor and they're,
Okay.
and it's kind of hard to see from the road as it is. The screening and one's pretty indicative of the roads, you can't see it anywhere.
So those are the ones you wanna replace?
Those are the.
The first floor and the second floor, you would leave them in there, yeah.
They would be so much.
If you're hoping on to any two, do them all.
The photos, if you look, you can see.
What's that?
Those are what you see.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they have the
But I don't think.
The wavy glass and the.
Cause you and I are swimming in a different.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think a lot of us live in houses that are a bit of this and a bit of that, if we're living in a high key century house. Yeah.
Yeah, it's literally.
I think, I think it's a fair compromise what Zach has proposed. Um, I think for the most part, we're really tough about windows and keeping them. But this is posing a health risk to you guys and, and, and now like a financial burden with the alarms going off. Um, so I, if, if the ones that are upstairs are not an issue and you can
Yeah.
keep them, then I think that's fair.
Yeah, the ones in the bathroom, so it's, it's not as, uh, of a sensitive room. It's, it's, like the finishes, I think, it's already, you know, it's a water basically exists.
Yeah.
The, uh, and then also the, like we said before, they would much rather not spend this money to file this window.
Right, yeah.
This is, if the windows worked without hurting the property, they would, you would be here.
Yeah, but they're affecting your quality of life.
But they also wanna honor. They love side art or they love that, so they wanna honor it, but as a, a look, and I think this is a way to do it.
Yeah.
And then there's also an accent, one of the windows, trim above the window with, I don't know what it is.
Like a mosey.
Just a little day, little flourish in the trim there. Everything, you know, you won't even know that these windows are in once it's done. It will be.
Okay.
And now John Hummel building it there, I, I can attest to their hand, hand, hand crafting. I've seen it, it's beautiful work, so I'm not, I'm not worried about that. It's gonna look very interesting.
Yeah.
So we're.
Yeah, may I speak? Can, can I be heard?
Judith, what would you like to say?
Oh, I, I would counterbalance our other member there and say I would be in favor of preserving all of the, um, original windows regardless of, uh, whether they're upstairs or downstairs. That's it.
Okay. Judith, you remember at the last meeting, they showed pictures of the mushrooms growing on the window?
Yes.
Just making sure you remember which.
Other than I, I, um, I've, I can't believe that that can't be remediated somehow. But that's just my opinion, so, you know. Go ahead.
We like your opinion, right?
Okay, let's get off.
Okay.
You visited.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Dave, no mushrooms. No mushrooms.
These are the she-windovers, you can see.
Pardon?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they would be new on the same machine that two of the original ones.
They would be new just like they were built that. A hu- a hundred and fifty years.
Well, now, now we're discussing different mean, different ways of, different methods of preservation, you know?
The ones that are there are not, they're not, the, the, the ones that you saw have new jams, they're single pane.
Yeah.
And they have stops in them inside and they're glazed on the outside and that's why they're leaking. It's the stops are letting water go underneath. They're not, they're not.
Did you go see them?
They're not machine stops.
Yeah, I don't, make you know that they are mushroomed up and beyond.
Okay.
But you couldn't build a, that was.
Right, right. Okay.
I.
Motion?
I'd like to.
Tomato, tomato.
Motion.
I'd like to move that, uh, the board approve, uh, option one.
The first option, yeah. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Change later, opposed, wait, thanks.
Congratulations. And also Zach, thank you for the, uh, the history lesson you gave here. Go find Bill, that was very interesting for me. Yes. Well, the registry says it's, uh, nineteen oh five or whatever, but yeah.
You want to say, make sure it's.
No.
I don't care.
Thank you.
May I, can you, um.
Wiki sign.
Here and you offer this, write a description of option one.
Yes.
Will you be in Judy's favor?
Oh, yeah.
Please, please sign.
This is this, the one we just approved, right? Yeah.
Sixty, sixty-one flats and straight.
So, so, yeah, we went to see, so it's not the house, it's the gallery.
Well, the house is associated.
This is the house? So, good, the structure next to it is not sixty, was it, she won?
Oh, 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 oh. We were looking at both thinking this was just.
It was a bundle of.
Oh, okay. Oh, so sweet little house. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Matt, you, hello.
Nice, good to see you.
Near the mountain forest, southern North Sea with my wife, our daughter, and representing the owner Nancy Hoover. Who is running the decorating operations in Bethany, Hollis. I'm a contractor, I'm president. Uh primarily a roofer, uh but I've been in business out here since two thousand and six, I was twenty-three. And first time I've done any work on historic home, so I literally may step into some interesting waters here. And I apologize.
Welcome.
I tell my client, welcome. Ready to take full responsibility, whatever I can do, I apologize seriously. My my my, a lot of my email, it says the only requirement working with us is a desire to have a pleasant experience. And sorry, I've created unpleasant experience, and I'm here to uh see see how I can do this in a good way. Presented with uh some photos of before pictures they have to photo before I understood this entire historic thing. We had ordered the windows, uh of which we learned the exact same style, that same size. I've learned a lot in the process, uh this little journey of mine. Which one, interesting, a couple of interesting things I can have to find the other day, if I would, uh take the the one more, one one minute here, is that I ended up getting turned on to the book. Had all the historic and I believe all contributing properties, and I opened that to the book, basically assistance of your staff. And a woman happened to be in the office, she's in the room today, helped me out incredibly. And I turned to the uh back pass number of two sixty-one Madison, a one-story, three bay framed residence with two over two light wooden sash windows, which we do have, we did order. And we're trying to be installed shingles, cladding, and a hip roof, none of which has changed. This is interesting, it says this simple pattern to the front porch, with turned posts, come and touch that, and a center entrance. The center, that's actually the only thing we did change, was the actual door wasn't centered. And we actually centered it without ever having read this, strangely enough. Also, we had another roof.
Great to hear.
Okay.
Thanks, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm just telling the, I'm just telling the true story of what it is here, I guess I'm happy, I'm here to do whatever needs to be done. Secondly, I'll say that we did the roof prior to all of this, not, again, not known, I've had to do a lot of roofing. I've hold very, maybe two permits over twenty years of doing roofing. Uh, that being said, we, there was asphalt roof on top of the cedar roof. We ripped the asphalt roof, we ripped the cedar roof, we kept the back, and we put a new five eighths inch thick red cedar dipper saw on, actually broke the roof back to its original. Which again, it's interesting that it's now back to its original roof style, which hadn't been the case, because somebody when they had to put these windows from the seventies in, they had put an asphalt roof also on that. That being said, that's my story.
So where are the original windows?
In the armpit.
There is one, I think, surviving on the porch, at least it was the day that I was there.
I'm so sorry, I didn't ever know the day you were supposed to be there, and then you had arrived there, or I would have met you there?
Well, I had, since I had an appointment, so. Someone, I don't know what it was you, because we've never met.
Yeah.
But I did have an appointment, because I know typically, you know, I don't. And I took photographs, which appeared in, I don't know if you've seen.
I got it, yeah, I got it.
And so I mentioned, because from the, there was a fellow working there, actually, who who's a couple of that.
Got it.
Uh, anyway, so the window, as you approach the house to the porch, the window to the right is a pair of two over two sashes, which I took a photograph, I thought from the inside, because from the outside, can't really tell the difference. So they were still there that day, based since disappeared.
Yeah.
Oh, I I was kind of misunderstood, I thought that work had ceased at the property. Because there was an issue, and that was registered as such, and that no work would take place.
They did, the day we received the stop work order, you stopped.
But that happened thereafter.
I do not know, I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know when I were there.
Anyway, perhaps it's fortunate that I took the picture, because that's what it looked like. And the issue isn't, does it kind of sort of look like it? It's not about that, you know? It's either the real paperclip, or it's not. It's not about what does it look like, what is your opinion, none of that matters. It's either old and or original, or it's not. If it looks pretty good, that's not good enough, because it's not old by definition. So we don't have to keep revisiting, if we make a really good replica, that's gonna look okay, it's not about that. If we start accepting really good replicas, we will then have a little town which is made up of built replicas. What is authentic, and that's why this nomination form that you read, sometimes a little off. Apparently, she says that the that the, it was was centered. Well, it was approximately centered, because it was between two of the four posts. And now we learn that it is actually centered. That's too bad, because that feature was what it was, and we accept these little idiosyncrasies.
I saw your heart stop when he said he had centered the door.
You didn't have to introduce.
So is the nature, uh just to get everyone back on the same page, is the nature of the application today, the acceptability of replacement windows?
Yes, I I think that is the, yes, replace the windows.
Well, it seems that, okay, the windows are gone.
They're all gone now? So it's moved?
I didn't remove, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't keep any windows or anything.
So the windows are gone, so what is our solution? We we can't retrieve these broken, lost windows. Uh, we need to simply address moving forward, and how do we?
I'm just realizing that, I didn't know that until now.
Yeah.
My understanding was it, when this went in on the third of July, what is it now, it's all of this? I I thought that as of then, that the work that had, the reason I went to look at it was that work had come to a standstill. And that the board needed to know.
I could go and look when the stop work order was.
Okay, so I don't know that part.
That's code enforcement, that's interesting.
Right, I I don't know, that was just my understanding. Um, I was just taking pictures to sort of report what was there to be looked at, yeah.
And and this isn't the first time this has been on the agenda either, this was on the agenda.
No, it was on, and then we set for a site visit, and then we, the building inspector went out and did an inspection, because there was a interior building permit issued for interior work. And then the building inspector went out and saw that the windows and everything else were and that, I think it was like days, you might have been there.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, filed for an inspection, they came, Tim called, he said, hey, listen, we got a situation. Cause he he said, work won't stop now, I said, we're gonna board it up, and we'll leave and leave and.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it was, the window question was on the agenda at at least once last month, before you, the stop work, before the boarding all, I mean before I was, was it, they they withdrew it from last month, before?
No, he came, he they, it came in front, one time, he, it was on for consent agenda matter. It was removed because it's windows and it's a historic thing. Then we set for a site visit, and then the building inspector went and saw that the windows were done. So.
So if the board wants, we can look into that with with code enforcement and with justice court if need be. But for the sake of time, we should probably address what, you know, I think that's what.
What remedial action is if the board finds that acceptable?
So Derek has said a lot.
I stood in front of it yesterday.
Yeah.
And the, was the door a Brasco door?
Was the door a?
A Brasco door. I mean, it's a damn good replica.
I don't know.
It's a, it.
Is the existing door, the new?
Yeah, no, the 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 new door that was thrown out, I mean, it looked good, it looked, you know. It's 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 a terrible replica when one could build a better replica, but looked good.
I'm thinking maybe since you've.
Yeah, no, I mean, I stood in front of it, the 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 door that you installed, the new door that's there now looks almost original. The mountains and mullions very thin.
Technical to the existing.
And and the Anderson windows look appropriate, mountains and mullions aren't exact, but they're okay, the 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 meeting rails are are thin.
So my question to John would be, um, I don't see how we can approve the replacement of the windows, since there's no choice, I mean, why, why are we, why are we here, I don't even.
They're in.
Well, I think we can, you know, maybe you've demand that you replace in kind what was there. Um, so it's obviously not gonna be you know, a hundred year, two hundred year old windows, but you use like a fine craftsman, and you use um special glass that speaks to historic homes. Because otherwise, we're just like throwing in the towel, and it's, it's we don't have another choice, because they're already in the garbage, you know, so what you could do to help um maintain what is left of the history there is by honoring the style and materials that are used in historic windows.
Let's answer your question, Kathleen, I mean, the the water is over the dam now. Yeah. New windows need to go in, unfortunately, either way now, it's this board's purview to make sure that, or to to approve whatever is going.
Could could we see what is actually being installed, because that's not.
I think, I think you should look into it.
He has, there's a bunch of pictures out there.
If you're, if you're installing new fabric, there should be, you know, cuts from a catalog and, you know, some specifications. Not just a, because that's what would generally be presented if you were presenting a project.
You you said you.
There's a.
These are Anderson four hundred series, right, that you put in?
Anderson four hundred series, wood, right?
Yeah.
That's the old details.
Do you got vinyl on the outside, wood on the inside? Oh, it's wood on wood, okay, alright.
And what are, whatever Muntin profiles, I mean, we're, if you have all that in the, in your, so don't.
Good luck, yeah, go out here.
Can you hear me?
You have, you you, that you had ordered, already the windows were all ordered, you said that. But how did you know what to order?
So, so he.
Same style, it's not.
Yeah, what, so they, they just.
For an awareness of a historic house.
Well, it's better to ask for.
That, those happen.
Hello, can you hear me?
I've I've done it.
Nancy Hoover's been a president here, running sixty years.
Well, then she remembers the windows on that. Drawing, drawing a two shows one over one window sash.
Two over two, yeah, they're all two over two.
They're one, you think you.
The drawings are one over one.
I'm looking the same way.
Drawings are one over one.
Sheet by two shows one over one.
And there's a hardship for a woman who's lived here sixty years, so how old is she? You know what I mean, I mean, it's punitive.
Well, we have a picture of what it looked like, because Zach took it.
I have photographs of all the old photos.
We have, you have photos of the original.
I have replicas here, I've seen it, it's been an entire binder.
So, okay, so you're drawing.
So this is the original.
That there are actually two over twos that you're installing, so the drawing.
Two.
I think there are two over ones, there are two over ones. Like the rest of the house, that what what we're seeing here are the, the the really, no, those are the alu- the aluminum uh storms.
There are some pictures in that binder of neighboring homes, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Yeah, because what's shown in this picture is to the left of the front door is a true over two. And that was the window that I had learned as being new and replaced.
It's a five.
Whereas the one to the right was the old window that was also true over two, but you were.
Two over two.
I've pulled, I've pulled up a picture that shows.
Like a true over. So, but the drawing, a two, shows that's one over one, to be installed. Your intention was actually just to be two over two.
Am I?
Right, okay, I'm just asking, because this this drawing, let's show that. Well, no, that's what the boards.
That's all we've got to go on.
Either approves or denies, so it is. And 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 what I was asking for is Anderson must produce a detailed drawing, sections, through the mountain, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that you, as the customer, know exactly what you're buying, and that's not it. Instead of drawing, this would be, you know, you would look this up in a catalog, and it would show the elevation and the section.
To jump ahead, so Anderson does make a historic.
Is that what's being shown here?
Use them on the Boulevard Watchcase factory there.
Well, that's a total fiasco.
What we're following about. Okay, so I'm seeing now.
Okay.
So, Anderson, four hundred series, would five eighths mountain, believe.
Yep.
True divider, it's simulated divided, that's why they're allowed to put five eighths mountain, has been accepted across the country. If you can hand this forward, that document, and you can show that you've used that window.
How many windows are we talking about? It's a very small house.
We got two, four, five, six, seven.
And what are we talking about in terms of, you know?
What's up?
How much do these historic windows cost?
Oh, well, that's irrelevant.
No, so the window he chose might actually fulfill it, that's what I'm saying, so he's already picked an Anderson four hundred series, maybe?
Yeah, the wood, it.
Wood on wood, so wood in and out, so it doesn't have the aluminum one on the outside, classic one. And it's thoroughly broken, it may satisfy, all he has to do is produce the document from Anderson that says that, and that would alleviate, it is a new window, but it's a kind of a nationally accepted window in large scale restoration renovation.
Well, it may be that, you know.
We're talking, no, no, I have here. Excuse me, the windows are gone, so you.
Okay, guys.
Yeah, we 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 got it.
I don't know, I'm not a referee.
Windows on size board now has to do with, and if you can prove that thing.
Yeah, I.
Somewhat, maybe a historic window, it's his first step.
We need to focus here, so there are new windows, I see we have photos in the record.
This is the new window, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The question is, does the board find these appropriate?
Pardon?
John? Question is, does the board find these appropriate, that's the law.
Yes, thank you.
Plan is to also build storm door, perfect, exact replica out of wood, I'm gonna build it in my shop personally, have the exact same structure and style of the existing storm door, that was part of it.
But the original storms are aluminum.
Not the original, original.
They were?
Oh, yeah.
Like the ones on the house?
Storm, storm, storm door, I'm sorry.
Oh, the storm door, okay.
Storm doors on the front and the back door, and the photo over here.
Yeah, I mean, that. It's it's wood interior, wood exterior, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I remember looking, I I I stood right in front of it, and I was like, hmm.
That's what we climbed through as a way of saying, I apologize.
The the door, the.
I wanted to see the side of the house, out of my own pocket.
The glass on the door, the glass on the door that you installed is single pane, right?
Glass on the.
On the door, in this little, whatever it is, guest house, what is it?
So, single pan doors?
Is it a single pan, that's, yeah, is it single or double pane?
Double, double pan.
Okay.
So I would love to be able to see the actual description of that window that shows, that that lists what the materials are, um and maybe tells us exactly what what type of wood, what type of glass. Um, just, I don't, I just don't wanna approve a photo that I can't read what the little text says, you know? So I'd love to see it in writing, that the windows that you're planning to use are actually definitely wood. And.
You should modify your drawing, that shows you the one over one.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what for other drawings, okay, so they need to match.
Yeah.
I think at this point, we're belaboring, we're belaboring the point now. Uh, the water, as as John said, the water's over the dam. Uh, you've done this already, and you know, wh- what's the solution other than to say, we accept this?
Well, I just said.
Absolutely not, I'm sorry, I will not accept that.
I would love to see it in writing, what the materials are, instead of approving it based on that photo.
Right.
Well.
I agree with Megan, we can't, you should table this.
I understood that it was wood on wood.
Table this until next meeting.
It has to, it has to be in writing.
Okay.
And and the plans have to. And and the plans have to reflect the correct two over two.
So, is Judy, are you, Judy is, uh, are you gonna move that we table this?
Yes, I move that we table this until next meeting.
I'll second that.
Well, the board also has the option to take so long, if all the board is is looking for the point of the specs on the window. You could, in theory, do a vote tonight, prove it with that as a condition, that specs will be.
That's where I was going, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
No?
You want to approve it tonight?
No, no, uh, with with the uh the supposition that he would be uh um. Satisfying our requirements, is that correct?
But I don't see.
As Megan, as Megan has pointed out, I would very much like to see the materials, I would like to see the antique. Glass that's going to be used or whatever, um, I don't think we can.
We have, Judy, that's what we're requiring of that.
No, no, she just said antique glass, so she's in a different.
Oh, I didn't hear the antique glass.
I was saying that these were not original windows with the wavy glass, all my photos show this, these are nineteen seventies windows, these did not have an early. Nineteen twenties, thirties wavy glass.
So that's not true, this house, the window that I saw, I took a photograph.
Yep.
Well, that's what appeared to me, so I do for a living. Comes to that particular building, which may date from the nineteen twenties or perhaps the thirties. So, not all old and contributing buildings date from the eighteenth century or the nineteenth century. This is that particular building, and that pair of window sashes that I took the photograph off of inside were original to it. The sash cord was broken, you know, they were counterweighted, et cetera, so these were original. Not what anyone might imagine as having dated from a much earlier time period. But for what it is, that's.
You know, there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to table this to the next meeting so that we get all the specifications. Can we at least vote on that motion and then see where we are?
That sounds reasonable.
Okay.
The tabling.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, table.
Okay.
I vote I to table to the next meeting, we get the exact specifications.
You're making a motion.
It's already been made, so all in favor. Hi, hi, I to table.
Hi.
Okay, table.
You're not a permission to this meeting at Canada three nine two to the town.
Yeah.
Has to get established by the building inspector and then.
I'll, I come next month as well. And I'm unable to do any more work on this all until now?
Think so.
Is there any other? There's, uh, they've they've requested me to spray foam, et cetera.
You have to talk to the building inspector very fast.
So, so is it something, my guess, my main question is, is a stop work order still a stop work order?
You have to talk to.
That's, yeah, that's not us, you have been punished.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Matt.
Changes, I think, works, you know. Yeah, that's what's happening. Next is Richard Pantino, one twenty seven Bay.
Who's requesting an adjournment?
Requesting to adjourn, one two seven big.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
John, we did. One oh three. Go consent to. I have a different.
Uh, I am here tonight with a brand new application for fifteen Jules Lane. Um, I'm gonna highlight the changes first and then can go through the plans in more detail. Um, but this single story proposed house is now supposed to be about thirty eight feet from the property line. More than fifty feet back from the edge of pavement, the garage has moved to the rear of the property with a single driveway. Gotten rid of the extra parking in front, the project still does not require any variances. The proposed building coverage at about eighteen percent and total lot coverage for below twenty four percent. Applicant has reduced the proposed GFA to about thirty five hundred when the code permits about thirty eight hundred. And for growing a traditional backyard applicant is proposing to maintain and add additional vegetation to the rear yard. Uh, maintaining as much of the natural grade as possible as shown on the elevations in the facility and the site plan. And drastically reducing the massing of due from the street, um, about thirty feet in length has been reduced. Um, so right now I have the site plan up, I will skip down to the rendering, which just gives a good overview. Of what it would look like from the street, we have a gable roof section with solid white stained cedar shingles. The roof is stained gray cedar, uh, the flat roof section has nickel gap shiplap siding and EPDM rubber roof. The windows will be metal clad light gray, gutters and leathers will be white, and the area way railings will be stained within a light gray. I also included the pack of course elevations, I'm happy to go through them if the board would like or if you have any initial questions. I'm also happy to answer the votes.
I'm sorry, you said how tall, um, the structure is?
Sure, so on the, I will pull up the elevations, so, um, as this board may remember, it's a severely. You know, the the grade drastically changes from the rear to the front, but on the elevation, you know, I just moved this screen over a bit. Um, and have, you know, so it's twenty feet, I'm gonna move it. On this gable section, twenty feet, ten inches. This is from the north elevation, so this is from the side, from one of the neighbors, shifting down to the west elevation. Which is the other neighbor. But with the flat room sections are more lower, of course, that's obvious from the visuals. Everything's still inside the pyramid.
What did you, um, when you see a plan again, I mean, how did you, how did you manage that to? You've removed thirty feet in length, it's now how long?
Yeah, so we we changed the overall shape, so it's really a completely new application, it's not like we shifted a room. We we threw the old plan out and started new, so the whole shape of the structure is different. Um, there's a patio kind of wraps around, it's almost like a a ski shape with the. Kind of the yard and patio in the middle, instead of being one long structure with a large backyard. Um, so that's what we, you know, scraped off thirty feet of frontage from the street.
Yeah, it's a side loaded, double deep, where it used to be just the bark of the wall.
Yes.
So it's a big change, I think that was suggested at one of the meetings, go deeper in the.
Yes.
The chief, the, you know, tunnel to the basement is gone, uh, and the second garage, all that.
Yeah.
It's a, it is now a one story house sitting on.
Yeah, I appreciate a lot of the changes that were made, um, I think you really broke up the massing, um, it feel, it, I, even though it is. Just under what, thirty six hundred, I think it's thirty five five square feet, um. And. The my, one of my. Concerns, I guess, is, um, just the, the fact that the house doesn't really address the street at all. And I know you're not gonna be utilizing a front door because your car is going to take you to the center of the home, um. But I I I like.
I think the hill challenges that, so it's almost like you, you gotta get up and then in, so.
Okay, we wanted to, again, I, there was concerns about the grades, we really wanted to preserve the existing grade and not take into the hillside.
Great, because I, being golden owner. And designer, and yes, I took a look at the front entrance idea, but very astutely. You notice that soon as you go to the front of the house, the grade starts to drop down, so any approach causes you to come from the parking. Back down over and then back up again, so it was not practical.
What do you guys think?
I think it's a good compromise from where you were at to where you are now. It, if you drive through the neighborhood. Probably smaller than some of the new houses that have been built there.
And certainly lower than some of the newer houses at the far end of the street, so.
Yeah.
I, yes, I appreciate how it. Yes, how much is coming on the side, how much there.
You have more green space.
And also on either side.
There was a concern, there was a concern about. Taking away from drainage.
Yeah, and all the parking is out of the front yard, all the parking was in the front yard before, it's all gone, it's all on the side.
Yeah, and that's really good. I'm impressed with the changes.
I have a question. Um, I did, I didn't realize that you also designed it, uh, before you, you you, uh. Put pen to paper or crayon, whatever this is, um, did you look at the other houses in the neighborhood?
Well, there's quite a variety of architecture on the street.
Yeah, anything, anything, anything like this?
Anything quite like this?
My concern, so I can, I can, you know, give you a jumping off point. My concern is the striking dissimilarity of, I I have, I don't have trouble with the house itself. I have trouble with the dissimilarity to the other structures on that, on the, in the neighborhood, it's not just. Street, um, it's a neighborhood, and we've had a lot of opinions. As you know.
Yes.
Um, we've had a lot of of feedback from the neighbors and I'd like to continue to hear more from them about this. But, and I appreciate your effort to to minimize the effect that this has. I'd also like to see, I think, because, um, when I visited, I I. What struck me was the the height because of the grade, and from from the street, from the curb. Um, there's, you know, there's really quite a climb.
This is actually the house that I was.
Yeah, but but this house is much larger, much larger, um, two story, since since high, so what we're proposing. Um, is much lower.
Yeah.
And massing, um, I could pull up several other houses on the street that have much.
But that, that vocabulary is a little bit more in keeping with with the neighborhood and the village, right?
I I actually don't agree with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I actually, first of all, I do think we have to remember that Joel's Lane is not in the historic.
Yes, I'm aware.
And, um, it is also a neighborhood in flux, it was a neighborhood of small ranch houses. The lots are, if you look at a plan of Sec Harbor, the lots in that subdivision are among the very largest in the village. And we see this changes occurring and houses being replaced with larger houses. I think, given the changes that this, um, that have been undertaken by this owner. Um, it actually, in terms of scale and materials, fits in quite nicely. For, in in my view, with the variety of, uh, old architecture and new architecture on the street.
And we cannot.
I would agree with that comment, I think it fits in well, and, uh, not only that, I think it's an improvement. Over some of the other houses on the street.
Thank you.
So is this still open to public comment? Anyone from the public wanna come up and speak?
Uh, may I speak from, uh, a distance?
Uh, one person is up already and then we'll go to the zoom. Go ahead.
Or you literally live next door to this?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been here four times and, um. I'm not quite sure how to put it, because it's like so many limitations, what one can say here or not, but. Let me start out, basically, I think that is an improvement for me, that design is acceptable to the street, as it is. But we got the plans, and like we said here several times before, it's like. It's not just the cosmetic of a house, it's the whole house, what does affect have the whole house on the street? And then we looked at the plans and all it did to me say, this is looks like a boarding house. This is like an underground bathtub, the entire basement is excavated, there's one bedroom after us, but. Very small living spaces, empty, but so I don't know what to do with that, it's like as a citizen, like. It feels to me like this thing is happening right in front of our eyes and I feel it's not right.
But he has the right to his own architectural concept, and that's the board has their authority.
I do, I do understand that, he has the right, but I have the right, as citizens, we have the right to say what we think about it. And the way between the review board, between the zoning board, between the the building department, how can that happen? How can that go down and say?
Because you're here and you have your right to discuss it with the board, and you've been here four times.
Yeah, I want, okay, well, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Um, I'm the neighbor on the other side of the proposed development, uh, the house is in my wife's name, but. Uh, our marriage seems to be intact so far, so I'm not worried about me having the right to have a voice here, um. I think our main concern is that, uh, my understanding is that the proposal. Is as a single family dwelling, but with the number of bedrooms and the number of parking spaces available. I think there's a fairly high likelihood that it will be, uh, deployed for purposes other than the use of a single family.
Yeah, I have to jump in there, I'm sorry, but there's case law from right near in Suffolk County where you can't look at at the potential uses of a property. That's been litigated extensively.
Yeah, we're we're.
It's not the purview of our board, we don't talk about what uses are, we are an aesthetic board. And we're concerned with the exterior.
Well, I I'll say for the record that I think the exterior continues to move in a, in a better direction than it started from, so, uh. Uh, if you, if you want me to get aesthetic about it, that's my, that's my feeling, um, what I. Do wish to, uh, not experience is, uh, loud parties going on late at night. People with lots of dogs running around yelling.
Very far outside of our purview, that's a code enforcement question, if that does happen, but as I said, potentials are not. Something that this board can or should look at at this stage.
Okay, well, all I can do is speak to this board today because I'm not, uh, in a position to speak with the other boards at this moment, uh, so I'm just. Stating our concerns for the record, and, uh, if it comes before other boards at other times for, uh, other reasons. It'll be here to reference, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Good evening, Tom Fabio, thirty nine Jules Lane, just two things I want to thank the board and me. For making the changes that we're looking to see happen on our street, I think it went quite a heavy way to. Change everything, I think, I'm pretty happy with the changes that we see here, and as you were saying, we can. Say, oh, you can't have somebody bed in a lot, what's potentially may happen, if we see something, it's our responsibility on the street that we live on. To report it, you know, I believe, I don't think Dean will do that, I hope he won't, but if we see something, as I say, it's our responsibility. Uh, you have the right to do certain things and the right to say something. Uh, you have the right to do certain things and the right to say something, but just to make it simple and more, not to get friends, I'm sure on the street. So thank you, the board for doing what you do, thanks Dean for.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a question about the, uh, this is completely over here in another field. Um, the the two bedrooms in the basement. Do they, the egress, I couldn't understand that from the plans, maybe?
Yeah, that's the standard design in houses. If you pull it up, I might be able to answer his question.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, that's why I said it's in another field, but I would like to have an answer to that.
Yeah, so in Dean's defense, puts together pretty quickly, it's pretty thorough. He can't stare at the plans and it might be missing a door here or there since it's a design.
Yeah.
But yeah, egress, he has a good sized uh window wells, um, as long as those bedrooms can exit to the. The well independently, they don't have to go out the door through the rest of the basement, they can be based.
Into that well, yeah. How does one exit that well?
So two forms of egress from a bedroom, so you have the door to get out.
Right, right, of course.
And it has its own unobstructed way of getting outside and up to grades. So that'll be a building department, he'll have to have a batter in there and and a removable grate or no grate, if there's no grate, there's gonna be no railing. But but yes, if they open to a light cord. So an areaway is small, a light cord is when it starts getting bigger, that's almost a light cord. As long as they have normal sized windows and a fireman can get in and a person can get out.
Okay, because I couldn't understand from the.
Cellar dwelling and you know, it's not not as good as.
Yeah.
But it it is legal.
And then there's egress from the well, as you said, yeah.
Do you have any renderings with other views? No, that's all I want.
There's a lot, um, there is a lot of vegetation on this lot, especially on this side, existing vegetation. And if you look from the rear and, you know, and in defense, it's just graveyard back there. But um, there's also going to be a lot of vegetation, so you may see like peaks of the gable roof, but that's pretty much all you'll see from the rear of the property. But it's all the same materials.
Protest from the residents, the cemetery probably.
Yeah, be careful, we'll be excavating. Sorry. That's right, sorry.
Just at the open meeting, I would like to be a part of that.
Yeah, the the one thing I can't see well, um, is the detailing around the the roof, the edges of the roof. I think there are no overhangs, I just, I and I don't see any detail, and I see no detailing around the windows either. We could just get a better view of that. Oh, come on, every, everything, enough, even nothing is a detail.
Well, that's true.
It's with white gutters.
White gutters, that's, you have the one shadow line where it's the only place that you really see a gutter for the most part. The flat roofs, the gutters are on the back side.
Okay.
So we don't have a lot of gutters exposed to the streets.
Okay.
That's the only roof that really had to catch it. And a little bit of the gable on the right side, and that gutter will run back onto the flat roof, so you hardly need to see that.
Okay.
The windows will be light gray metal with the shingles going right up to the, no exterior.
Completely flush with the exterior wall.
Yes, it's a modern, it's a modern uh interpretation of the gate. So less is more. It's a collage of a building.
The massing is broken up very, very well.
Yeah, you have to remember, we wanted a modern building, so this is a. Green departure, yet still has that, you know, international style.
Well, I don't know about that, but it is.
Yeah, so motion to close the public hearing.
Is there anybody else in the public?
Okay.
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Hi.
Um, motion to approve fifteen Joel's Lane?
Second.
Thank you all very.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep standing here. Two more.
She really liked it so much.
Yes. But sorry. Yes.
Did you get a haircut?
At some point.
Sure, it's mine.
Yeah. I always went that short. Mark, if you wanna start your screen share.
Yeah, I just sent a request, so I'll say that.
What are we up to now?
We're up to numbers.
Raisum.
Catherine Howard is current attorney for the owners of forty nine Raisum Street. Um, I was here last month and the month before, this um, this application's been in front of the board for a couple of months. We also did a site visit with Mr. Tuna Braw. Um, and last month, we were granted variances for the dimensional relief of the structure. Uh, but even after the approval, we have made even further reductions. Um, just to remind the board, this is a contributing to our structure in the historic district. The front section of the home is historic. It was determined that the rear addition is not historic, so that is where the.
Long.
Yeah, with all the windows, yeah, so that is not historic and that is where um the the bulk of the work. So um, we are proposing a rear two-story addition with dormers. And then a like a side kind of um enclosed uh sunroom. From last month, we also submitted renderings to the board, which helps to um highlight how that side addition. Because of how far set back it is and the slope of the um of the premises, it's pretty difficult to see. Um, if you're driving by, if you're walking by, you may see it for a moment, but it is set back uh pretty substantially from the front yard. Uh, Marcus Zimke is the architect on the project. Um, and so um if the board has any initial questions, we're happy to answer it. Otherwise, we'll take you through a brief overview of, again, the the focus of the rear addition.
Yeah, um, so yeah, I know, I know that we've had this in front of you a couple of times as a discussion item, but so to to reiterate, and as Katie mentioned, we did. Make, we did further reduce the height of the rear um addition as much as possible in this last iteration. We are still stepping down and breaking down the mass as we go to the rear to try to minimize how much of that visual is uh is there from the street side. Um, and and have and have brought these renderings to show sort of what our intent uh is. And that we are, we are making our best effort to really respect the um, the element of the home, which is the historic part. And we feel that with with where the addition sits on the property, as far back as it does, and with the grade in mind from the street. Um, that it is, it is not in, you know, imposing on the original and historic part of this property. Um, and so those are the, the, these are the sort of along the street views of the of this, of this house. Um, we do have a rear view, which obviously shows, again, this is a narrow lot, so what you see from the, from the rear and not the street. Uh, is obviously the addition itself, but I think what we're trying to express here as well is that with the roof shapes and even, and the further reduction we made in height. We are still making our best effort to sit as far below as possible from what is already a low existing roof uh at the front of the property. And that's really it, I think this is, this is obviously additional to our last discussion.
Do you have a rendering from the side?
Yes.
No, that is from the rear.
Not from the side, because there's, there's, there's not, the side lots rather narrow. Um, there's not a real view of the whole side that. That is, would be, that would be real, I guess.
Yeah, so it's like a six foot fence and vegetation, so the person couldn't really see. So that's why he did that kind of front side view.
Right, but the uh, the um. The elevation that you showed us was rather substantial. I mean, what what is the comparison square footage wise of the front of the house to the rear? No, I'm sorry, not to the, to the addition, the proposed addition versus the original house.
Um, I, I can pull it up in a second, I don't have it uh off the top of my head, but it is, it's less than. Sorry?
Go ahead.
I I believe it's less than the overall of the existing. I I'll have to, I'd have to confirm though, I I I, let me, I can have to look.
So, so the original house, then there was an addition that's not historic, that was, that was, do we remember from what, the nineteen twenties or something?
Yeah, the natural is performing, calls it nineteen, circa nineteen ten side apartment addition. Uh, I don't. You could, you could see the structural framing inside, maybe go in, which I did with them. And it didn't appear to need be that old forward. It almost looked like there was a smaller addition on the back that they hint to in the history book.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
That was expanded and none of it was there.
You, you mentioned that the first time, what you're reading, yeah. Right. So the original struc, just, I'm just trying to get, I think, to Pete, what Peter's asking in terms of scale is we have the original house. That is.
Do you know side elevation markets?
That is about how many square feet, then we have a little, what was quite a small addition around nineteen ten.
Maybe three square rooms, so, and it's just a little square die.
Yeah, so the total existing uh GFA is about eighteen hundred. And we're proposing about twenty seven hundred, but you're asking us to break down.
Well, yeah, because the the addition is, it must be, it's my understanding must be subordinate and uh inferior in size to. The original, am I correct?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the feeling is that it's visually supportive.
Visually subordinate.
Actual numbers can sometimes.
Yeah.
Be challenging.
There, but wait, this, a variance, there was a lock coverage.
Because it's so narrow, we needed.
For the side.
We, this, yeah, there's this pyramid.
Your sitting house is completely non-informing, and it is like three feet from the side property line. And actually, we, and that's the uh rear addition that is even more non-informing.
Right.
And we are proposing to fix that and give more space, so a greater setback on that side yard. But it still requires pyramid and setback because it's such a.
And what about lock coverage, given that the original footprint?
Sure, so what?
We are, that we did not seek a variance for lock coverage, we did comply with the zoning requirements for lock coverage.
So it wasn't more than fifty percent of the.
Are you talking about GFA or lock coverage?
Um, I actually am talking about lock coverage.
So lock coverage, we are below.
That would be a zoning and building inspector determination.
Yeah.
No, I know, I'm just.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like, it's, it looks like there's adequate uh um square footages to the, to the property.
So the, it just, the new, the new build is twenty seven hundred, is that what you said?
Correct.
Is that totaled, because the original GFA is eighteen hundred and the new build is tw- is twenty seven hundred?
He, yes. The original is seventeen eighty, the proposed is twenty seven hundred.
So eight hundred plus nine hundred square foot addition, though it's deceiving.
No.
It consumes a pretty large existing first floor, right? So, but they take that off and then build it back, but those numbers don't change, right?
I, I, I see what you're saying, but it's, so it's nine hundred square feet more.
The delta is nine hundred twenty six.
Yes, okay.
You're basically adding a second floor to the existing.
Yeah.
And making it wider, making it wider.
Yeah, yeah, shifting and making it a little wider and and adding a bit of narrow living space upstairs.
Right, are you including the porch in the building?
Not, not, the GFA doesn't include the outdoor porch, it only includes only the the square footage within the envelope, which is.
Roof, it has a roof, right?
It does have a roof, yes.
But isn't the definition roof covered?
That would be a building inspector's.
I don't believe it, so I'm hinting that there is a roofed structure covered.
Yeah, that count, yes, the building cover, correct.
But it's not GFA, right, so we're saying it's nine hundred square feet of GFA, but then there's that portal circle, that's all new. So how big is that porch?
How, how big is the porch, just the porch itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, the covered porch, how big is the covered porch?
The covered.
A screened inside porch?
The one that you're designing, that's.
Yeah.
How big is?
So that whole, that roofed structure, that shed roof structure is two hundred and twenty square feet. Just this section off to the side.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Two twenty. So eleven hundred.
Are you, um?
Oh, sorry, no, no, wait, sorry, that wasn't, that was not, I, there's, that's a split space, so half of that counts towards GFA. So it's only an extra one hundred to the number that you were just referencing. The if, the, because this is basically what's, what we're proposing is a portion of this is enclosed as the, as like a mud room entry. And the, the other portion is exterior screened in porch. So in the GFA, I did account for this boot room entry, so it's only a hundred extra square feet, hundred twenty extra square feet. Uh, but that's, again, that's, that's building coverage, but yeah, also still also compliant.
Are you putting in a new foundation?
We are, yes.
So you're raising this house?
We will lift it and then place it back down and at its same height, yeah.
At the same height.
What will it be made of?
It's, so it will be a new found, uh, concrete foundation, but skinned in um recycled rubble from the existing foundation. So that's something that we also stopped, talked about with Zach on site. Um, you'd be able to reuse that and cut it and veneer the um, veneer the foundation wall, the new foundation wall.
And that'll look like brick or what?
It's actually, it's actually, it's actually rubble at the moment, so we'll maintain that, that visual.
Uh, so, yeah, ask a question.
Yeah.
Which is, um, there, you are removing a shed. Structure from the right hand side, if you, as you look at it. Um, is, was that shed piece, yeah, was that shed um original to the house, how old is it?
That's, that's actually this rear structure that's sticking out, that's a gabled structure that was at the rear. That's the one that um we determined was not historic.
Okay, I get it, yeah, yeah.
So that's, it's actually, that's far, that's much further back, basically. Much like, much like what we're proposing on this side, which is the same, it's, it's set very far back, which is why we felt it was important to show these renderings as well. So that you see that that, that shed that's sticking out from the side is actually quite far back from the.
Okay, yeah.
The original structure.
Now, I, I stood right to the lower left corner of this, this rendering. And the impression that I got was that the addition was far more visible from the street than. This, this rendering suggests.
So part of what, um, and this is, this is the result of, I think, being in front of the board a few, quite a few times. Um, we've been asked to always uh show the intended plantings as well. Um, as part of our renderings, as part of how the street, this house is perceived from the street, and so in this case, I've included. Um, the plantings and trees that are proposed. Um, with this application. So, part of that is, I think, ob- obviously necessarily to create a little bit of a screening effect, but. Um, obviously from, from, from this view, you can see that we are still leaving the, the width of the property quite open visually.
Are you adding that stone wall in the front?
I'm sorry?
There's, appears to be a stone wall between edge and the uh flowers.
Yes.
I would, I would submit that a stone wall is not really appropriate to Sag Harbor.
Is the stone wall a part of the structure? Is it existing?
Uh, it is not existing, the, this, no, the garden wall is not existing.
I, I agree with um Judith, there is.
Yep.
There is, there's no stone in.
Okay.
The whole world high street and, um, so I think that's where we were lending the inspiration from. High street, there's.
That new.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know.
Again, my concern is, I mean, I, I understand the. Uh, the planting, but that's not a structure, I. How do you feel about? That, that angle of from the street?
I, I think it, I mean. You're gonna be able to see it, there's no way around it, I, at the moment.
But much more of it than, than uh is suggested there.
I mean, I guess it could be. I don't know if the driveway could be narrower, I don't like, there could be more planting, but you are gonna be able to see.
It's gonna be visible.
It's a big, it's a big addition to the house, but I don't know. I mean, if you want it, if. I mean, there could be more planting to hide it better.
Planning is not.
But that's not our, that's not our planning, it's not true. No.
Yes, but we do require a landscape plan and we do. Prove the plan and I would say a landscape plan with a stone wall um would not be acceptable.
Right.
Stone does not, wall does not seem appropriate to.
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, uh, yeah, we, we, we would have no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, removing the law and conforming to that request.
From that corner.
I mean, I wonder. Does, does it matter if we're talking, now I'm thinking back about um. Square footage of the addition versus the original structure. When we're talking about the addition being subservient to the original structure. I feel like we can look at the. Most original part of the structure, like the really historic part, like we would be removing. However many square feet are in that addition that exists right now, right? So. If we just look at the square footage of the historic structure, the first house that was built there. How much is that? In comparison to this new addition after you demo the, the existing addition?
Yeah.
What is, what are those numbers?
So that's a, the, the original structure is two hundred square feet larger than the addition. I think what's, I think what's maybe deceiving, there's, there's, I, I understand length, I appreciate that, that, you know, there's length to this addition, but it is a narrow. Footprint. Um, to the rear.
It's not that much narrower.
But it is, yeah.
You know, the porch it is, but what the structure itself, the original box. It is not that much narrower. Can you take us to the side elevation again, please?
Mm-hmm.
There you go. My concern is, uh plainly put. It looks to me like the addition is eating. It's dwarfing the original house. Does anyone else get that, that sense?
Yes, and that side of elevation. So busy.
That's two dormers.
Yeah, it's.
So busy, simplify.
Yeah, but it is, it's.
Well, if we, the only, the, the challenge here is if we, if we reduce the dormers, we, we remove livable space on the second story. Um, and, and part of our efforts have been to reduce the ridge line of this roof so much. You know, through these conversations. Um, obviously, I am trying to make sure that we, we can get livable space, uh, you know, on, on the second floor. So I guess that's the, the perhaps the challenge of, you know, when we say. Two dormers, I, you know, these are just in, in rooms that are occupiable spaces. Um. I, I, you know, it to, it to that extent, I'd be open to, you know, you know, recommendations that would. Maybe make this less busy, um, you know, what that would mean if it's, if it's material, if it's.
Pure windows.
So we've reduced, we've, we've even reduced the amount of windows since our last discussion, so. Again, I mean, in an effort to give light and air. Um, to the inside of the house, I. I guess I, I, you know.
Lot of windows.
I think it's a question of the proportion of. Glazed area to wall surface, so if you look at the, you know, the front original block of the house. Even as you proposed it, with sort of shuffling that fenestration around a little bit. You still preserve that sense of the windows being less of a wall than the siding. It's, it's just a proportion thing, whereas the reverse is true of what you're proposing. Not only because you're breaking it all up with different roof surfaces. Uh, and that massive chimney, which adds a little more, you know, activity. But there are more windows and they're closely spaced and they're rather large, and so the proportion of glazed area is larger. Than the siding. And so there's a reverse effect.
I think that's a good analysis, I mean, it's a, it's a small house, so we understand the challenge of adding a two-story addition because. That is subservient to the original house, because it's just not a very big house and it, it's not a very high house. But um, I think Zach's analysis is excellent and I don't know exactly what the solution is. Because you're the architect, not us.
Right, but my, my concern is that, that this, that the addition should be clearly subordinate. And, and it is not.
Yeah, and a case could also be made that since this already infringes upon the pyramid law. Perhaps adding more cubic feet. In that second story is simply not appropriate.
Well, that's, I, it's just to, just to be, just to be really clear, from a, from, from a, from a zoning conformance perspective, that would mean we have to eliminate the second story. Like the entire, the entire second story of usable square footage.
If the applicant has a, I'm sorry, just to clear something up, if the applicant has a variance, we have to treat it as a, as a conform use essentially.
Okay.
Or conforming. Configuration.
But aesthetically and connecting to the historic house. I think we have some legitimate concerns and I'm wondering, um. Can we look at the side elevation again, please?
Sure, yeah.
I'm just wondering if. I don't know how many rooms you have in that second floor, but. What if there were not that many rooms in the second floor? Are there two, were there three? What if the second floor didn't, it did not extend as far as the. Or underneath.
Or if you whacked off, if you kept the first. The first dormer and whacked everything off.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's that chimney issue, but. Yeah, I mean.
I mean, this is, this, this, these are two rooms, basically, in, in plan.
Two rooms that go across the, the width of the house.
Yeah. Well, no, sorry, sorry, I apologize, sorry, no, it's the, the. One is a bathroom, um, that's split by a hallway and closets based on the other side of the house, and then one is a room that goes the full width of the addition. The, a bedroom.
Uh-huh.
I have a question about the um. Windows showing on the uh upper elevation, um. The second floor of the historic house has um a very unusual window. Is that? Yeah, it's got um. Three windows all stuck together, um, and what, what's the story on that of, is, is that? I doubt that that was. Original to the house.
Yeah, so we, we spoke with Zach about that on site, um, these two windows were deemed, uh, I think, uh, basically a later add. And so in an effort, we, we followed Zach's advice to align these windows more symmetrically. Um, on the facade with what are existing windows. Um, and so that, the proposed is actually an effort to really bring back what is a very visible, obviously side elevation. Um, from the street to be more historically conforming visually.
Right, that, that's um good, um, when I look at the addition. I see um. Windows that mimic the historic windows, but I see that I believe there are too many of them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just, that's my two cents on that, I think that makes it, it's part of the busyness that needs to be calmed down. And also, um, is there a, is it necessary that the chimney be so tall?
Um, we could probably reduce it a bit more, uh, maybe, and. We could probably reduce it about a, maybe a foot, which obviously we'd be happy to do.
Okay.
Is there any way to do a, a three D, a three D rendering where we can spin the whole thing around?
Um, it wouldn't be.
No, like, in, like. Interlocking in a way so that we can, we can see how the two, the two. Parts of this whole work together, the massing.
Yeah, that's a good. And also the dormers work, work, I mean, the dormers. The dormer. It seems, I, it's hard to tell, I mean, again, I guess we could look at the elevation from the back, it seems sort of shallow. I don't know how it relates to the pitch of the, there you go.
Yeah.
Um, to the pitch of the addition.
Yeah. How about it? That, that, that's a good recommendation.
Um, sorry, I was actually gonna show you a. This is a, um, from the zoning. Hearing. This is, this was an earlier model than what we've now further reduced the height and everything to, but. This is kind of what's happening three dimensionally.
Marcus, that looks worse.
Well, this was bigger, I'm trying to give you guys a, this is a much, this was a much bigger version. I'm trying to show you basically the massing stepping down.
Okay, now do you have the current one?
Because.
Well, this is approved by the ZVA, but we have since reduced it, so we haven't recreated this, but.
May we have that, may we have, you know, your ver- you know, the, the recent version of that now?
Yeah, we.
Yeah, the one for us.
Yeah, we can do another, we can do an updated version of that model. Um. Yeah.
And, and I think.
So you would like a, a white box, right?
Yeah.
That's fine, it doesn't have to be fully rendered, just.
No, but I.
Well, 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 I mean, I, I won't go so far as, you know, fully rendered, but we would like to see. Because of those busy dormers and the windows, we, we really should see how that all works together in reality.
Yeah, and whether that's all in the model or we see it.
Well, what I could, what I can do too is in, in an effort to, to obviously also give the most um honest interpretation is just create more views. Closer up to the house. I know that typically we focus on the street view, but if we need to get up and close to the house and around it. You know, we can do more renderings, more views to, to kind of get more to the side, even though that's obviously. Not the public experience as much, but we can, we can show those details more.
Yeah, also maybe one from this exact view, just, you know, remove some of the plantings. Because God forbid that tree dies and then we're seeing the house.
Yeah, can we have photographs from that corner?
Um, I think we might have. Oh, it's not that far, wait, I'm, if you give me one second, I think I can pull one up. Be. That's the. That existing view.
Hmm, that's not kind of what I, that's not what it looked like when I was standing at that corner, so I walked around the house.
This is when we met with.
This was a couple. I mean, this is, this is one, obviously, that's blocked by a current tree, but.
But we walk around that. Um. It's pretty.
And the, and the other thing is, is, can you? Are, are the fixes to the fenestration, particularly on the second floor of the, I mean, I think we all agree, it's really busy, the windows on the.
Addition.
New addition.
Yeah, I would love to see it more simplified. Um, I know you're working with what you need to do on the inside, but. The side elevation in the plans really feels as, it, it appears that. The addition is dwarfing. The original historic structure. Um.
And again to Zach's comments, that the amount of windows, it's just a completely different. Experience than what it, what it looks like, what the original house looks like. So that the feel of all those windows is unlike what you have in the original house, and I understand it for the. Lower level of the porch and so forth, you're having an indoor/outdoor experience, but I, I don't, if you could. If that could be simplified, I think it would.
To better reflect the original house.
To better reflect the original house, I think that would uh be helpful to all of us.
And it wouldn't do, do, too much to diminish, so I've been in that house and those windows in the existing house provide ample light, it's very airy.
Um.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, we're, and that's why we're using the same proportion. Uh, we're using the same window size, um, but I do have to make sure there's a window in every room, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of it, um, but yeah, understood.
Unless you put the, unless you put the bedrooms in basement.
Ideally, ideally, there's.
That was good for you.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, and I will say, I think that part of, one of the, one of the challenges with these two D drawings has always been from the beginning of the discussion items on this particular project. The very problem we're talking about, which is that it feels like it's dwarfing, um, because it's, it's a flat drawing. Um, I think. The, the other, the, the other, you know, the, to the point that Zach brought up about these sort of windows evenly spaced with more siding on this side. This is the gable end of the structure where we have more siding to, to, to work within. Because we're trying to re- reduce the mass as much as possible with the addition. We have to use dormers to be able to get functional windows into living spaces, and so are, are inherently. Uh, dealing with a different condition that is, that is not the side of this existing. House, so that is, you know, we were trying to contend with, you know, these, 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 these different constraints as best as possible.
Well, we have those two requests, any other, any other?
No, I, I have a request, um, or just a question. Are you committed, or that is the owner committed to um like copper gutters and the copper standing seam roof on the porch?
Um, I think that we would, we'd be more than happy to talk about what the board. Might wanna us to reconsider or consider.
In, in my eyes, um, it feels very flashy for such um. Kind of a modest tone.
Okay.
I, and I also would worry about the glare of the copper. On the standing seam roof on the side, um, for neighbors.
Well, it's oxidized, it's sort of anitized.
So the, 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 the only.
Not so quickly.
Right.
Well, the only. The only, the only um reason that I think we really brought in the standing, standing seam here is because um of the pitch of the roof. There is a certain pitch at which cedar shingles can't perform. And so, we have to use a different roofing material. Um, and so we usually would bring in, uh, you know, we can do like a lead coated copper or zinc, something that patinas. Um, but I think there's, there's a technical aspect to why we would use a different material for the low pitched roof is all.
Yeah.
Is that a lighting fixture between the two windows? Between, uh, behind the porch?
It looks weird.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's actually a mistake, that's not supposed to be there.
Oh.
Hey, good, there was also one, in another view, there was another one facing the street. And, and I was think, there, there's one.
Yeah.
No, wait a minute, I'm talking about the one on the left.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is that going away?
Well, we do have to have a window, a light at the door. Um. I'd be happy to consider other locations that can, can be at the, at the door. Uh, somehow.
Is it the same as the light on the front door? Or is it a different design?
Um, I would, I would, I would probably do a different design at the back ultimately.
Maybe you could show us. What it's gonna look like.
Okay.
Okay, that's a detail we can, we can address later. Okay, do we, are we all in agreement about the two requests?
Yeah.
The angle and the uh the box? Yes?
Motion to table, forty nine Raisum.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
You're still here?
Motion to approve, or can I do it? Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
To your back. Did you ever see Woody Allen's film Zelig? Where Zelig shows up throughout history, he's there when Napoleon sounds himself. And he's there when George Washington is crossing the Delaware. You're our Zelig.
Now, that's, I already started off.
So Catherine Bowers- Crayton, uh, party for applicant, the C six Glover Street. Uh, last month, uh, we presented very, a very long meeting uh as a discussion item. Uh, to refresh the board, um, there is an existing building permit. For a renovation in addition to this home. We are here tonight seeking a modification to that approval. Um, part of the application is to um the left flat roof part, what was approved was to gable it and change it. Applicant is seeking to keep it, but just modify railing to lower and also to. Change the proposal to the rear of the structure. So I'm joined here tonight by the architects. I will let them introduce themselves.
Perfect. Uh, good evening. My name is Connor Dingham. I am an architect with Pierre McCowell. This is my partner, Joaquin Bay. Um, and would you like to walk through or you guys?
Yeah, so since I have it up here, do you wanna walk through? Um, so what we have in the presentation is what had been approved versus what is proposed. Again, because we are here for a modification of the existing approval. Um, are you comfortable scrolling through?
Okay, so um what we have is a beautiful eighteen ten historic home. Um, our intent is all of the uh additional detailing that we have is going to. Be designated as matching kind. Um, so that's material, um sizing. Paint. The one exception is the paint for the windows. You can see here in that upper corner. Currently, the sash and buttons are painted very dark, so you can't see any of the lights. Or the designation between the paints. So we are going with a more medium tone light. Uh, color so that you can actually read those um historic proportions. So again, we are maintaining this front elevation and now. What was initially proposed as uh an increased footprint on that side, we are simply. Um, keeping that level roof and adding a uh new railing. Last time we spoke. Um, we had more of a Chippendales style railing, which matches a detail that was on the front. There was some notes about wanting to potentially simplify that. Um, and so what you can see is that we have actually looked at the. Um, Nathan Howell House from nineteen thirty-three. You can see there's the sheets of wheat railing detail that we are implementing. Um, at both, both the um. Revised railing here as well as the um new railing for um guard protection on the proposed screen porch. Um, if we look, this is the existing um approval for plan. Um, and then what we are proposing is shown here. Um, and then that square footage uh is now proposed at four thousand four hundred and eighty. Um, previously, that was four thousand four hundred and ninety. On the second floor, this is what's previously approved, shown in blue are the additions. And now what we are um proposing is a simpler um massing on that second floor portion. Uh, we can just go through the elevations if you'd like. Um, this was the previously approved. Uh, with the new larger side addition um and the gable roof, you see there are a lot of uh additions made to the. Shutters that were added. We are looking at simplifying that, so this is much more keeping with what is uh actually in place there. So really, all you'd see different from the front is the new railing as well as this side porch addition to the right. This was previously approved. That's the side um from Long Island Highway. Um, and then this is what we're proposing, uh simplified, fewer windows. Um, we do have um that screen porch. Um, and then that is the previously approved rear. And then this is what we are proposing here. So again, simplifying. Uh, we've maintained the exact same pitch of the primary historic mass. Um, for the smaller addition on the back. There was also a question just wanting to confirm that that lower bridge. Um, was called out there, so we are reducing that mass. And then we have also set it back um from both sides. So when you're viewing it from the front street. You're not picking up on on that addition. So again, previously approved and proposed.
Back to previously approved, please. And then back.
That's correct. Um, and then we have a few perspective views um previously approved here on the left. And then predominantly what is seen on site right now is now what we're proposing on the right. Um, again, the lower portion, you can see the shed um addition. Um, still is proposed on the right. And then from the rear, this view is from the backyard. Um, so not really seen by anyone but the family, but just wanting to be sort of bright and um share that with you.
I do have photos from the, there's a sidewalk there and a street. There are very tall hedges. Um, I have photos. It's very difficult to actually see the backyard from the road.
Yeah, you can't. We tried.
So um, yeah, if you have any questions, we'd love to um address anything.
Can you go back to the renderings, please? The elevations?
Uh, the elevations or the renderings from the beginnings?
I I didn't either rendered. I mean, the drawings, the elevation.
Anyone in person doing this was previously approved.
I think that. Keep going, please. I had a question about. Okay, the, this one, what? No, okay, keep going. There was something in the back that I was, what, there's a, there are windows in the attic. What is that under? That, see that those little band of windows?
Oh, this one. So, yeah, that, there is a storage room upstairs, so that's, that, um, it is. In the attic, I think it's only six foot six. It is really just storage. It's just in order to get some. And so it's not, it's not egress. It's not meant to be habitable. We're not looking at.
With the addition on the right, this is all fenestration.
That is existing fenestration.
It is.
Yes.
From what era?
If it's existing and it's not an art of this application.
I understand. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so.
Well, it appeared as if it was something that was being proposed that you would build. What you're saying is it's already there.
That, that's already there. Yeah, so it's just maintaining what's.
Was it, was it recently within?
I believe it was done in the nineties, but.
It's down to the nineties.
It's Steve Gambro put those in.
Then this has nothing to do with, but why the change from the, from the uh gable? To what is still existing now?
So, um, partly i- in our previous approval, we were about five percent higher in terms of our lot coverage. We wanted to reduce our building coverage in terms of just being able to have a little bit more space. Um, and so that was quite a big mass that was being added. You can see um in the floor plan.
But the mass of the rear addition is getting larger than what was approved before.
The masses actually, uh, in, in some respects, the, the width of it, uh. Is, but the length is not. So really, um, where that's being shifted to is this single story lower. Um, portion. So this whole area is single story, whereas that back addition um is full two story.
Totally approved.
You are correct about the height.
But it's shorter. Okay, because my second thing was, and the floor can't long, and now the second floor is shorter.
So the pieces are, are moving around, yeah.
But it does affect the massing, so.
You had said something about um changing the color of the windows. Um, which I agree is a good change, but um I wrote on my. Uh, plant on my agenda, are windows historic? Do not replace with Marvin. So are you?
The pre- and the previous approval was a replacing kind.
Yeah, let me check. We have, I mean, I can, I can check what's in the. But we're not, whatever was previously approved of those windows, we're not changing, we're not adjusting that because that structure, we're not. Yeah, and like we were proposing shutters, we're not gonna do shutters. I remember Long was very happy.
So that's just the paint thing then? It's just paint?
My understanding is that the previous approval included a replacement kind um for those windows. Um, the final finish that I was just discussing was going to be a change to that paint finish.
Okay. So you're replacing all, every window and.
That is my understanding from the client's perspective. But that benefits from existing approval. That, that is existingly approved.
Alright. I, I think the massing of the new proposal is um. Actually, really nice. Um, I, I did write down. Uh, the rear addition necessary, it's huge, but then like seeing. Seeing those three D models, I like, I understand better. And I went to the site this morning and I walked and I. You really can't see the backyard at all. Um, you will be able to see this one story addition from the street in the driveway. Um, but I don't, I don't think it's the. I don't think it's offensive.
A similar version of that was offered.
Oh, right, yeah.
This is a public hearing also, so.
Anyone from the public wanna speak? Fifty-six Glover?
Motion?
Motion to approve fifty-six Glover?
All favor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
Are you really finished?
Twelve seventeen, Middle Line Highway?
Twelve seventeen, Middle Line.
Board, uh, my name is Denise. Here tonight with the designer architect, um Joshua Sager. He's actually, boy, you should be starting with the really, really, um, we were here recording last month. And we got some feedback um from you, so we have some alter plans. Uh, well, when he gets started, I'm gonna hand out some of our uh renderings for you.
Good evening. Um, as Denise said, my name is Josh. I am a architect by training, uh local silver. I live here in Sad Harbor, up in the village. Uh, we are talking about Middle Line Highway. I happen to live on Middle Line Highway. Um, so, um, we got some really good feedback last month. Uh, and just to sort of reiterate some of that feedback, um, the stair tower, if I can correctly point it out, was. Driving some of the issues with the architecture specifically related to the height. So to the height of the house and the height of that front stair tower. The gables new large with some other feedback. Uh, the space uh seems to be maximized in scale. And there appears to be a lack of soul in our renderings. Um, and there was also an overall issue with the mass and size. Um, so we've provided additional renderings, which are in that package there, which was via model. We suggested that we build a three D model and then actually spin around to see those. Um, so if you look in your package, you can see that. If, if you don't mind, can we just uh go do a two hundred on the television side? Um, and in addition, with those renderings, we also dropped them into an aerial, so you kind of get a little bit more context. As we look at the, at, at that constantly in the neighborhood. Uh, just to note, some of our renderings removed the trees clearly, so we can see the house. I think sometimes in the previous renderings, the overall bit part of the architecture. So, um, and we can talk through that, of course, on landscape planning, uh supersede the. Uh, where the trees may, just to be very clear on that, we could, we could point that out. From the perspective of our specifications, uh, just wanna note, there should be the chart that you guys also have. Yeah, so that chart just sort of outlines, uh, for me, I, I never designed a house that maximizes. The uh coverage or maximizes setbacks or whatever it may be there. So I just wanted to put this together to show. Items like max building coverage is twenty percent. We're literally at half that. We're at ten percent. Uh, our lot coverage, twenty-five percent is permitted. We're at seventeen percent. Our front yard setback is thirty-five feet. We have brought the house up to the front yard setback there. Which then means our rear yard setback, which is thirty feet permitted, we are at fifty-five feet, a little over actually. And then lastly, we have fifteen foot side yards. We're at sixty-one feet on one side and seventy on the other. So, you know, relatively speaking, we try to keep the house sort of compact relative to the lot itself. Um, but as we go through the changes, I specifically wanted to pull up the front elevation and the front facade. Uh, what we did there to help with the absorbing the feedback and improving the architecture. Uh, first off, we removed the attic's uh roof deck. So that attic roof deck. Was driving this kind of mass of a stair tower in the center of that drawing there. So you can see, uh, we actually, we removed that, which now means that that stair tower is pushed down behind, uh, below that twenty-five foot. Um, datum, which allows us to have a flatter roof. It is not a flat roof. We do not have a flat roof at all of the public project. Um, that was one. We also dropped the roof height when we did that, the actual height of that, almost three feet. Uh, but the, the major change to the roof is we've moved from a, a. Previously a gable roof to now a head. So we've kind of cut those corners. Uh, on the left and right, if you look, we've, we've hit the roof to sort of help with the, the overall scale. Um, other big changes is the cedar gable, which is on the left side of the drawing. We, we thought was rather large. So we've brought that down in scale as well. Uh, so you can see that cedar gable on the left side is now made smaller. Um, and then we've also uh got rid of the triple window in that large gable, so now that's a double window. Um, and then, um, lastly, uh, we've, we looked at uh just the overall proportions. We made sure that right hand side shows uh how we have. Uh, just a one floor kind of aperture on the, on the side elevation, which again is there to help with the scale. As we go to the next page, uh, A two one zero, uh, Karen, if you don't mind, just flip into the next one there. As we go to the next page, uh A two one zero, uh Karen, if you don't mind, just flip into the next one there. So you'll notice um the big changes are that roof deck, that attic that was carved into the roof is gone. So again, no stairs to go up there anymore, no need to get up there, uh which helped us lower the roof height. Uh again, the left and right hand side of the roof is clipped, we're now a hip versus a gable. Uh the scale of the cedar gable this time on the right hand side is reduced. Uh so it's it's smaller and that also meant we did not have to have that additional slider uh to the to the rear facade there, so that six foot slider is also removed. As we look at the sides, if we go to the next sheet, Barry, A two two zero. What we tried to do here is really clean up the uh the roof pitch and the architecture where it was imbalanced and uneven on the top image there, the previous. Um so our thought there was to make that a hip, which now brings its roof eaves to be at the same height. Uh again, overall, the roof height has dropped about three feet, a little less. Um we've removed the attic windows, so we previously had two attic windows, those are completely gone. And then uh as we look at the next page, lastly, the other side, our west side, A two three zero. And I apologize, I couldn't keep these on the same scale when we drew these, uh just to fit on the sheet. But you can see more of the same, where we got rid of that attic window, we clipped the roof to get a hip roof there to help with the mass and scale. And um and we brought the overall roof height down uh to about a little less than three feet or so. So if we go back to uh the front elevation, which is A two two zero, so it should be like three sheets back. Which the front facade, uh two zero zero, excuse me, A two zero zero. Yeah. So you can see, you know, we're we've made the efforts here to kind of absorb the feedback and I'd love to get more feedback from the overall uh board.
Um I have a question, um you live in Sag Harbor?
Yeah.
So what was your inspiration?
Yeah, really good question.
The time, the design?
Glad you brought that up, so uh what we first did was we looked at our neighborhood, the context, um we saw.
Where where is it? Where's your neighborhood? Where where do you live?
Middle Line Highway.
I live on, uh.
Oh, you live on Middle Line Highway?
I live on three percent of Middle Line Highway, this is twelve seventeen. Um but uh two doors down from us is forty five Dennison, um which would is under construction right now. Uh it was a brand new, it is a brand new home. Um Denise is gonna show you the architecture, which is in the same sort of fabric or language, but with flat roofs. Now, to me, um I don't personally like, and this is just an aesthetic, a flat roof. Uh so we tried to stay within the same language, but working with the shallowest pitch we can work with on a roof, which is six on a twelve, which is actually what gives us our building height here. So if you look at our side elevations, we have a six on twelve pitch. Um again, just to avoid the flat roof scenario. Uh so in summary there, we really looked at the architecture of what was then approved, right next to the board's head.
So clearly, there's a large um evolution of this neighborhood that you want to progress on. Talk about across the street from uh being on division, cuz that's what your house is addressing. Ranch house on top of a hill. This, the other house right across the street from you is also a relatively modest house, um right beside you, very modest. I don't even know what to call it, like traditional house. The design you are proposing, I mean, I I think it's amazing, you have sixty feet on your side yard. And I was there this morning and I was, you know, I took sixty steps and like I, you know, obviously, I'm I don't have twelve inch feet, but I was just like, I don't understand how this very, I mean, it just feels large. Um you, it says on your part that it's two five nine oh building coverage. I wrote down after reviewing it on my agenda that it's uh three thousand three hundred ninety total GFA?
That's uh different than coverage, so GFA is the size of the building.
Okay.
So two different numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that that's first and second floor.
So that also means that it is up for um public input, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. I, as someone who grew up in Sag Harbor, is on this board to preserve its character. I I would advise you to look at the houses that have existed for longer than what's being under construction right now. Um I understand there are trends that happen, lots of them are um black and with clappard siding. But and I don't wanna be offensive to you, because clearly, this is hard work put in, I appreciate that you're trying not to max out. But I also, I don't know, I just, it doesn't feel like possible. It feels like a huge house squeezed, like I was just at the lot, I'm just, it just doesn't not adding up. Also, behind you, you have a single story ranch house, which I know you bought, but it exists there right now. So given your immediate surroundings, this is a jarring um departure from the existing homes that a lot of those you could have looked to for inspiration.
Yeah, so I I got your thoughts?
No.
I I appreciate um your comments and the awareness of context. Um as we look at the homes that are across the street, I think it's important to note, this lot is almost a full acre. It's almost a full acre. The vast majority of ranches, one story homes in the village are on, at best, an eighth of an acre. I'm not looking to take this one acre lot and break it up into four lots and try to get four quarter acres and put ranches on there. I'm looking to book one single family home where I can do a fifteen foot setback on both sides and instead, we're doing seventy on one side and sixty on the other. So I think relative to the lot size, relative to building coverage, where we're literally half what the max is, we um are proportional. Now, are we proportional to the ranches across the street because they're on an eighth acre or or a little more, a little less? Maybe not, but if we wanted to be proportional, it would literally mean chewing this single family lot up into four. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
A lot of people looking for houses.
What style of architecture would you say this is?
Scandinavian.
Well, it's not a true hip by any means, it's a clipped clipped mass. So in clipped mass, you would show more of the gable end, but you're not showing. I know that may sound like it's contradicting what we said here last time, but that's why it's dangerous to keep coming and asking and seeing what the opinion is. So what I see before me now is not the Scandinavian architecture. I see a a large mass that is attempting to look smaller by clipping off its ears, narrowing the front gable, but you haven't narrowed the house, you just, there's an extra window there, so well, well, you didn't just narrow the gable. Those gables don't protrude very far out, so they're false facades. So when you get facades on a box, you're creating like what looks to be town halls or three houses. And it's literally still just a box with facades, that's what I'm seeing. And I think Megan's kind of, since she's not in architecture, she's looking around saying, I don't see any other things that look like that in the neighborhood. And she is right, it's it's a big box.
I think if we would look at what was just approved, it is, it is a jarring um juxtaposition to what is in the neighborhood.
What are you referring to?
Yeah.
Forty five Dennison, which is, it should be in front of you right now.
Uh I actually walked, I took a picture of that building, of that permit, and I looked at the steel job and I looked, it hasn't been, uh it's it's stopped, right?
No, no, it's ongoing, it's.
No?
No, it's right, it's right in front of you.
No, no, I I looked at it, and we, I was there yesterday, I looked at it, um it looked, it's a much smaller house.
I, it's a much smaller lot.
Much, yeah, but it's also much smaller.
But it's not a much, I think that that house is almost three thousand square feet, right? It it's it's quite comparable in square footage. And and it's a flat roof, modern house.
And this is, your your your, this building is three thousand square feet?
We we are, we are three thousand for the first and second floor. We don't finish the basement unless our specific buyer wants to, and we're not, we're not.
Thirty three ninety.
Thirty three ninety.
Thirty three ninety.
Thirty four hundred.
Yeah.
And the one on Dennison is the same size?
It it's not the exact same size, I can guarantee that, I I, but it was very close to three thousand, is what I recall. It's also a much smaller lot.
No, I know it's a smaller lot.
Yeah.
And I understand that that was approved, but I I was here for that and I voted no. And I tried to make the case then, guys, go down Dennison Street and look at the ranch houses, there's so many ranch houses. And it's unfortunate.
But I mean, so is the, is the thought here, this should only be a ranch?
No, no.
No, but it should be, it should not be so dissimilar to the surrounding houses.
There, and there are ways for you.
Despite despite the size of the land.
There are ways for you to utilize your space and have a twenty five ninety square foot house. And.
Sorry, Denise, you wanna just say there you go?
Um I'm tr- I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this with my glasses, but I'm I'm pretty sure it says three thousand five hundred and twelve square feet for the house around corner.
Right, yeah, and a lot of people who approve that are not on this board.
So it is a bigger house.
Which which house is that? The one that you, the one that you and I looked at, that's three thousand five hundred.
Anyhow. Um there are ways for you to design a house that gives you scaref- square footage and is comfortable living without it feeling like
Less mass.
But so massive, um my, I shouldn't say it.
Well, I I think I think you're you're on to something, which is what we're trying to do. Um in one side, we're saying, design the house to feel less massive. And I think, you know, David correctly identified our strategy there, which is, and I don't wanna use the word town hall effect, but it is to break down those proportions into geometrical architectural elements of gables, of protrusions, of that push and pull, to do exactly that, break down that mass. This isn't, you know, like what forty five Dennison was, which is the box. You know, we were purposeful in breaking up that mass while still trying to work with the vocabulary and materiality of what is in our neighborhood and what our neighborhood is evolving to.
But Dave's position, Dave's observation is well, is is uh is well taken, that it does look like three, it's very massive. It's just, it just speaks to, it's just big.
But you, hold on, hold on, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose this point. The lot is almost a full acre.
Yeah.
I have a sixty foot setback and a seventy foot setback on each side. I can be fifteen feet on both sides, right? So I've already brought the house in, and and if we look through the series of renderings, if we go to the aerial views in particular, you can see relative to the lot, the house mass is purposeful and contextual. That, I mean, I think that was obtained, it was a good comment um to that we heard um last time from Kathleen about trying to make sure that we look at the model of this house and how it sits in the context. I'm hoping these renderings, you know, in particular, the ones where we see it from a bird's eye view, start to show that the house relative to the lot is proportional or small.
Or are you suggesting that there are no large lots in all of Sag Harbor? I mean, outside the historic district, outside Sag Harbor, there are no reasonably sized houses on large lots?
I I mean, reasonable.
I mean, yeah, we we should really focus on this lot, this house.
Yeah, I I I think that, I first, I think the fact that you wanted to draw inspiration from another house nearby is fine, but at this point, I think we should move away from that, as you said, you don't like flat roofs. I don't think the problem, I think, I I don't think the flat roof or gable roof is the issue here at all. My issue is um with it is a little of what um take off on what Dave said, which I just think you, you have a large house and you are using a strategy of breaking up the mass by having what appear to be different volumes, but they don't actually read as different volumes because they they are um so shallow on the outside. And in fact, the uh gable on the front facade to the right, unless I'm misreading it, that material doesn't even wrap around on that side, so it doesn't even read as a volume. So that would be one point I'd say, and the other thing would, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, I appreciate that you brought the roof down to um reduce the sense of scale. Um one of my, uh but I I'm not sure the hip roof helps you solve a problem of.
I can't talk, I'm in a meeting. Okay?
Di- different uh math, different uh angles coming together. So um and the third, the third thing I'd like to uh raise is this issue of materials, and I think I asked you the last time about, um it's interesting, did you, I don't know if you used Scandinavian last time, which is interesting. The main dark material, what is that again, can you remind me?
So it's a Sierra eight by Hardy line, it's a vertical um, a a vertical material that mimics the the wood grain, but it is a silicaceous material.
It's a silic, yeah, I'm 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 familiar with with Hardy and uh and then using the wood, I think I asked you if you would treat it or and you said no, you or maybe would be treated to remain this color.
We anticipate using natural cedar and um we're we're not treating it, so.
And not letting, but not treating it so that it weathers gray, which is very traditional for this area.
So if if the board wanted us to treat the cedar, I have no problems if so.
Are there ways you can think of in which you could um perhaps make the massing, continue to work on this idea of breaking up the massing, but make the volumes actually um read more as real volumes, do you understand what I'm saying?
Totally, and if I, if if I'm understanding it correctly, would potentially, they're right now, they're shallow, right? We don't want this to maybe be so shallow. So if these volumes were actually to to pull forward or backwards, do you think that would help break up the mass?
Well, possibly, yes, I mean, it's it's hard to say without actually seeing it, and again, you're the architect, we aren't. But I do feel that there's, that what you're attempting here could be further developed. Um and it could help reduce the sense of mass that I that you know, houses are getting bigger and you are on a big lot, we understand that, that's not exactly what we're dealing with here, but we're dealing with the impact on the neighborhood and how do you actually convey something that does feel more in context with the neighborhood as it has been, um and taking some cues from you know, Sag Harbor uh materials, coloration uh and forms.
Yeah, there are a lot of um large houses, uh really well designed, and I don't want you to mimic a historic house, but on High Street and Prospect Street, there are large houses, like four thousand square foot houses, but they don't feel super large because of the way the building is configured. You know, it's like one gable approaching the the street, and then the rest of it falls back um or to the side. And I don't wanna design your house, but I I I feel like you just breaking up this facade, it doesn't come across as less massing, it, and please don't take offense, but it comes across as poor design. I I just, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with a flat facade. Um but I think if, in order to do it right. Um but I think if in order to do it right, you wouldn't be able to have the full width of the house as you have it here.
It's sort of like what Dean did on Joel.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and one thing that, well, again, we don't wanna design your house, but you you can also, you know, you can move some of the volume. You can rote, possibly rotate the volumes, I mean, I understand you're trying to do something. You're you're aiming to get interior space and you're not using as much as you could use. And we, I think we all understand and appreciate that and also that you brought it down a little bit, but um. And I think there can be a contemporary interpretation of traditional architecture. I think that um. So without giving you too many specifics, we hope we're giving you some sense of.
No, but I think. I I think that's excellent, the specifics are excellent, and that's why I greatly appreciate the precedence there. I will look at High Street specifically, uh Prospect as well. I, that's super helpful. So if I can get even more of that to say, you know, look at what was just approved earlier today, you know, to to start to frame that. It's gonna be um quite telling to influence.
When you have your enormous rear setback, so maybe take advantage of going down and farther back, right?
Right.
And then masking that on the corner, right? Cause your house, doesn't your house?
It's on the corner, yeah.
It is on a corner.
Yeah, of 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 middle line and division.
Yeah.
And division, yeah.
Yeah, that's a very good point, yeah.
And then, you know, you kill, you're killing all birds right there.
Yeah.
I'd like to understand that a little more.
It involves slingshots and.
You actually stumbled onto them, and they're a corner lot.
Yeah.
This architecture doesn't speak to it being on a corner lot at all.
It doesn't speak to your other, your other frontage, the other frontage.
Right.
So it's that thing.
Right.
Corner lots are great, I mean, you get to sit down on the corner and go, yes, but that's not.
Right, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you got this, you know, seventy-five foot setback, which is.
Yeah.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, I have something similar, my my, you know, I I have a very, I have almost an acre and I have a very large house. But it doesn't really seem seem like that because of the.
So you're saying look up Derek's house is out there?
No, no, you know, you don't wanna build that house.
But I I are you almost suggesting the form of the house should be like an L?
Well, maybe, yeah.
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Can you go that far if you are an architect, as you say you are, you you know what we're talking about, you.
But for example, for for example, here's, you know, I don't have a great view of it, but you know, here, this is what Division Street is here.
Corner lot, big lot.
Yeah.
It's down there and you're looking at this kind of little one-story shed that's not very deep, I don't know quite what that is doing.
Are we, we're to be, we're standing on Division in that image.
Yeah.
We're standing on Division.
Yeah, our house faces Division Street.
Oh, right, sorry, so then it's actually, middle line is the one where your garage is.
So middle, middle line. Correct, correct.
So, and that's not necessarily a great um. Might be another way to tuck in the garage doors, anyway, I think what we're saying is you can match what.
And we said, it's, I think we kinda said.
Yeah, I think we said enough, you 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 understand, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The dress is the corner.
Love hearing it though.
The size, it's not necessarily about size, it's about what you do.
Yeah. It's tactics and logistics.
Anyone from public wanna speak about twelve seventeen Middle Line Highway facing Division Street?
Thank you. Uh you guys have all your questions?
Okay.
Okay, you make a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Okay, eleven Amherst, please, um when you're first adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, eleven Amherst Road. Motion, motion to adjourn, eleven Amherst Road.
Second.
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one thirty, Jermaine, I got her, ask her to adjourn it.
Motion to adjourn, one three two Jermaine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Quick straw on the girl.
Thirty-two, Tomer.
Do we have any plans?
Hmm.
Do you have any more work?
Hello.
My name is Charlotte, you can be the architect, uh for Mr. Ricco, that will be here shortly.
Right.
That this has been speaking from this table?
Yeah.
Because I have to talk loud.
Okay. Oh, there it is.
Beautiful.
Yes.
Take it right as is.
Yeah, my my client is supportive and uh we're proposing uh an addition uh project uh moving to to work there. And uh so I'm speaking, um we just love the front addition, actually. And uh this, this house is done, as you know, from nineteen twenty-three, it's a crest, this is some street beautifully. Uh however, the addition done in nineteen ninety-two, I think, is fairly obvious where that was done, you know, the socks and the windows. The flat roof, uh the biggest kitchen. Uh you chart, if you keep going to the back, you can see that there is a, that that's a new addition, the big gold window there. Uh some of the other uh lighting doors I can see throughout the house that we saw during that time. I just went over to the left. So our our goal is to try and uh, this is the existing garage that we're going to be uh removing. We're gonna build a new garage in a more uh practical location that allows my client to come in out of the driveway with it. And yet still have area for backyard, it kind of takes a lot of that, a lot of the backyard to get the garage. Um you can see from the site plan uh that uh first floor addition consists of basically two places. One is the uh would be the north side, uh the north side of the house. South side of the house, which is by the driveway. And on that side of the house, what we have is a one-story uh addition that consists of, uh here consists of a uh. A powder room, a mud entry, and a pantry. And then adjacent to that is a one-story uh covered porch, trying to mimic the covered porch that's on the front of the house right now. Uh this addition, the uh is is uh. Is fifty-six uh s- square feet. And the uh. The house, uh the addition itself comes off, comes off this, comes off the house. Thirteen feet, what comes off the house, um thirteen feet that way. And it sits back uh on the front of the house, approximately eleven feet. So it's just pushed back over the front to the side, which we enjoy. Uh and on the, and on the front, on the first floor, we have a new uh covered porch that basically wraps around. Would deal with the house, and then also that sticks out, we'll leave it on the uh. On the north side of the property. And that also sticks out about. About five feet, five and a half, five to five feet, just a little, and we have, and that's that's completely a covered porch on the wall, on all, on all sides.
Um. Do you have any elevations?
We do, can we, can we go to them?
I didn't come through on the, on the P D, but I have.
I have, I have a large plan, I can show you.
Yeah.
It's okay?
Sure.
Hi there, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I am. We just, they don't take any elevation, first, you know, so we just find out.
And we, can we all stare?
I have it on my phone.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, wanna flip to the uh. We know, there's, we have a plan. My plan was gonna buy it. No heated living space, it's hundred and fifty-seven square feet there. So, existing first floor, twelve hundred, it's hundred and eighty-one, alright.
Um so I have a question, it's, you said you were building a new garage. You are?
You're gonna take the old one away, the old one is located.
Yeah, it says on the survey, existing garage to be relocated.
So we're gonna try relocate, but maybe T eleven, and we analyzed it, the plates on it have all been rotted, the the door was working, so. Went to my side and tried to carry, pick this up and move it over to the other one again.
Okay. But now I need to know if it's historic or not.
You wanna allow me?
Because I didn't, might make a note, like, don't remove this historic garage because it says you're just relocating it.
So uh I can, I can, I can actually picture it, but it's made of T eleven.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
It's it's a, it's a composite, like, uh eating pot that was very, especially designed back in the.
Eighties, seventies, yeah.
Eighties, yeah.
It's a very cheap attempt at siding.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna pull up the.
So point to me what he's doing here, this is a new screened-in porch.
Oh, let's see, let's uh existing, here's our existing, right?
So let's start with.
He wants to add a screen porch.
He's adding, no? Oh yeah, he's adding a screen porch.
Where's, this is the.
So here's our dining room, here's our, uh where is her?
I think so, yep.
There's no, oh yeah, north, well, I don't know how.
Well, so he's, he's.
Here we go, here we go, that's the front.
So he's, he's, he's taking this and just going.
What does it say?
Right.
No.
Uh.
He's adding, going around here, alright, and what else here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We're doing something, we're adding staircase to basement?
He's adding this.
Yes.
Okay, so you're.
Alright, so, you're, you're gonna, you have to, you actually have to present, telling them what you're doing, we can't have like just a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, or literally conferences, yeah.
That's it, we'll meet this in a minute, so you can just present, telling them what exactly you're doing.
Well, you know what, why don't, why didn't you start by with page? Because that's what we're all doing, we've broken out into groups. Describe each each of these, the first, the first drawing, will you just give us a description of what you're doing? The first is where you take the the original house and you, you add the uh the uh screened-in porch.
The B O, the B O, only going to show you the existing and the new on one sheet. So we look at you.
Blessing.
Alright. She's the old one. The top, the existing conditions of the house are on the top of the sheet. Top of the page. And you can see that we have basically got the the entry room, we did, there are two issues, there are two additions to the house. On the left-hand side, we have, and the additions are in, are in black.
And pre closet and powder room.
Yeah.
Okay, and a new porch.
This is.
Part of the old covered porch.
Okay.
And then that's, that's the addition on the first floor, on that side of the house. On the backside of the house, we have aligned the new screen porch with the back of the existing kitchen wall. And our border back around, it's going itself, creates a beautiful sort of L shape.
Right.
Covered porch, this is a one-story, all this, this is a one-story.
Where are those stairs going?
These are stairs, 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 it's gonna go into new basement.
Okay. We're doing a new.
Point of the elevation.
Oh, wait.
Room configuration, so we're not significant, because that's about interior organization, okay? I think the elevations show the scale, the massing, the, show what you're doing. The room, the light, the room layout is, you know, we do kind of inventory, we're gonna need to show where the additions are.
Yeah, and you said you.
Which the elevations will show.
And you said new ba- basement, are you lifting the house up?
Always start the plan.
Yes.
Well, it is.
You're, wait, let's.
Okay, we're having cross talk, sir?
Yes, tell us, new new foundation.
The basement, the foundation.
Yeah, so the, the 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 existing house has, the existing house, the nineteen twenties, that foundation looks terrific. The new basement area that I have, that was done in the nineties, was the, was the, was the uh, I mean, the kitchen area, the back area, that's blocked and that's moved forward.
Okay.
We're taking the entire house, we're gonna lift it up, we're gonna put a new foundation underneath the kitchen area.
Right.
And then we're gonna raise up on a, on a, on a, I told you, the the new fa- the two feet, the foundation of the existing house to give my client.
Three feet.
Existing base right now, so it's fixed for something, you know, we we wanna raise it up. The difference you'll see, you'll see that difference in the front elevation when we go to that page where basically the front facade, the wall, it's gonna be the same. But there's gonna be two more steps versus about the two steps that they had.
So you're raising the whole foundation by two feet?
Raising the house that went from eleven, twenty, for eleven to thirty.
I recorded three feet when I reviewed.
It's two feet.
Hmm.
I don't think that's really desirable to lift the house noticeably old. I mean, I know some projects end up excavating to get a deeper, you know, basement.
Right.
That's, that's part of that kind of consideration. But in terms of getting greater height in the basement by lifting the house and leaving it up higher by a couple of feet. Is really changing it in relation to its setting and.
Carrie, can we see the the uh photo of the house from the front?
Well, I.
Approach.
I will say.
It's hard to see because of the landscape.
Hide behind the bushes, but.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
We would, we would do that, we, it's our goal to make, hopefully to drive by, never know when we're prepared, so that's, that's our intention. And I understand that, Tom, but what I will say though, that what, where it helped me is that uh the grade on the back of the house. It's 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 higher up on on top in front and drives up and gets taller in the back. So the back of this house, these shingles are literally right on the ground, which probably caused a lot of, I was not proud of it, it's sort of decayed. So if the lifting of the house did two purposes for myself, and I, you know, I don't think it's anywhere. But it allowed my, to get the the wood, the structure out of there. Uh but it's just, that's just the.
Zach, what, what is the write-up on the house?
Yeah, it is, just to check, make sure we got the address, um.
Thirty-three eighteen.
Thirty-two, okay, two-story, three-bay frame residence, six over six and eight over eight light group. Interior light group window, shingle wall siding, concrete foundation, and irregular roof, shingle-style house. As a co-overhanging eaves, dormers on the front and side, a recessed entry for a segmental arch opening. There's a rear one-story addition. This is as if this is nineteen ninety-four, and this is ripped up.
Yeah.
Uh and a non-contributing garage. So.
Okay.
But I would suggest that if the owner, the owner, if the owner. Your timing is perfect. If the, if the owner has allowed the soil to rise to the level of touching the shingles. The solution is not to raise the house two feet in the air, the solution is to remove the dirt from the shingles.
Hmm.
Because the house wasn't built with shingles touching the house. That occurs over time because grass clippings, et cetera, et cetera, turn into soil after a hundred years. So so I'm just saying, you know, proposing that one, you know, motivation to lift the house is to get it out of the dirt. Is is a very expensive solution to a very simple, you know, issue, which is that the dirt has risen, which it does, and it needs to be taken away from the house.
Um I'm just, I I think it's a little more complicated than.
But it's a little late, I I I didn't mean to digress, I think the board is more concerned about the design.
I think that's an important point, though.
But it is an important.
Because raising a historic house like this.
And leaving it up is.
Leaving it up, yeah.
Leaving it up is a big change um that.
And it doesn't seem to be necess- I mean, it's like, I don't.
Not necessary, that's exactly what I wrote.
Yeah.
Lifting the house?
Yes.
Well, part of it's to add more liberal space.
I see, yeah, you wanna. I see, yeah, you want a ten foot basement ceiling, what is the current height of your basement ceiling?
And you know, and and the contractor said the the current um foundations, actually, the original foundation is great and very strong, solid.
Great.
So he said we shouldn't touch that.
Good.
And instead of taking out the foundation going down, he said, given the fact that the original foundation is in such good shape and it's poured concrete.
Hmm.
Both, they age concrete.
And he and uh so he said the better idea to give more space and more height down there. Uh would be to just sort of add on to the existing foundation walls to give ourselves additional height down basement. To give us more livable space.
Or just.
Raising the house is inappropriate um historically aesthetically, it just um it's not right.
Uh I'm sorry, what's up?
Um raising a historic house.
So the other way to get some height, leave your foundation, our designer out. Which you can dig out the floor of the basement, not not on line with the foundation, but step in several feet.
Yeah.
And then go down deeply.
Which obviously is not. One, I I wouldn't mind having a little sit a little higher off the ground, because it's very low and sort of a lower point of property of than they were, but. So there were multiple things, but one, we wanted to save money um. And not have to take out a perfectly workable, stable foundation um. And so we thought this was actually a better alternative to that, otherwise, you're right, we would have to dig out a a perfectly good foundation.
No, no, not the foundation, but.
The floor.
The floor foundation, but but again, it's a perfectly good. Foundation, it's a good stuff.
And you can't make livable space as is.
It's a low. So.
How high is it?
I think it's six. Without a without a ceiling, it's like you know, pipes and all the everything else, and it's annoying.
It's like a historic house, it's basement.
Yes, um.
Okay.
We are, we were trying to, as opposed to trying to go out. We didn't wanna take up any more of the arborage of the property, and people are gonna think you're doing that, I mean, if it, we definitely are, we're adding porch, writing to the. What is it, fifty foot side entrance and.
Well, you have a very mature tree on the side, is that side porch going to affect that tree?
It should know that the tree, landscape details is told us it's not healthy.
Oh, really?
But they haven't done a study of it yet, so we're 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 trying not to do it.
Well, oh, yeah.
Is it a Japanese maple?
It's a Japanese.
It's probably not healthy.
Yeah, it's a natural basic.
No, I mean, I know those.
Well, then you can see the rotten.
I happen to know those trees on that street.
And you can see the 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 rot on several of the big branches above are actually fairly.
The roots are all tied up, right?
Uh yeah, and so they said it's not a healthy tree, um so.
Would you be willing to replace it with a mature, a mature tree?
Well, our plan is to replace a a lot of anything we take out. I I I'm not planning on doing a lot of landscaping, because the the landscaping on the property is actually pretty tricky, so we're trying to.
Love.
We're trying to maintain as much of this as possible, I love this house, I love the property, I love everything about it, so I think John has come up with plans that do minimal.
Great. Me too.
Um to change the look of this house, of using the grazing was gonna change the look of the house much, um because it actually sits pretty squat. Um and it's a low area, so we didn't think that lifting the house, I mean, if we have to, and dig and take out a perfectly good basement floor. To put a duck shelf, I guess we have to, I was hoping to avoid that, um.
You mentioned the cost, I should think that lifting the house. Is expense.
Yes, but we we didn't, we had already sort of.
I just picked up, I just picked up on your comment, I'm not introducing.
No, 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 we took, we took that into factor, though, when we already talked about buildings, but we were hoping to lift the house without the additional spec- expensive taking out the foundation. Um which was a condition, so, but anyway, that's not, I know expense is not your concern, but I didn't think we were changing. I love the house, so I actually didn't wanna change the house, I'm I think John's design.
Yeah, one with that.
Is pretty perfect in terms of, he's, if anything, I think added elements that enhance the existing, like the porch, I think adding, taking the. The archway entrance and repeating that around the house, sort of just, you know, if anything. Yeah, you got it, you got it. Oh, sorry, sorry, I was like. So do you want to do second floor, do you want to go?
Yeah, we 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 were going up the stairs with.
Yeah. So the the top machine has the existing condition, basically, count the stairs, there are two bedrooms in the top of the house, and the third bedroom is in the back. And the thought was, we were gonna do all of our attention, create a nice suite. The two bedrooms in the front state of state, other than we filled in the uh dormer areas, give them both bathrooms. And then on the left side of the hallway, we're gonna get theater, but that's the bedroom, that's the bathroom, and it's lost, that's just. Uh all this work basically occurs, of course, a lot of this work occurs over the flat roofed area, which was the. Which is the kitchen. That's the name of the new uh. We probably need a suite, face the back of this, we didn't see that. And as as just as, because we're here on this particular sheet, you'll see when the front doors come out. Then we set back, we set back a little bit, and then new new doors come and match those, so we're trying to match. Idea, let's just try and match the existing architecture of the dormers, of those portions. So we can, so we can go over the beyond those aspects. So those, these roofs, lower roofs, dormers will match together, and then the gable of the front bomaine. Bridge on top will be matched, you know, the master bedroom. Uh but can we just look, let's give the basement remarks a story?
Yes.
Yes, can I?
Yeah, so. Elevations could be.
Yes. Um if you can. Well. The front facade is here, that that is the existing condition, and you can see where. Um this new, the new addition would be the left, we have the panel, and we have a new carpet porch, trying to match the viewpoint of the existing porch. This is a one story addition, this side, and this is, and this is back about. I told you, ten ten or so feet, this is back about fifteen, this is a new addition on the on the screen porch. Way back on on the back.
Was that that flat roofed business that was built in the nineties?
Yes, yeah. Uh on the side elevation, this um.
I thought we were getting rid of that.
No, we had it all. Um well. There there. There, let's go to the original, there's some of the. Alright, so this is the existing dormer. Existing house. It's a flat roof where the uh kitchen is now, so it's like this dormer. They're replicating up here for Peter's bedroom, and I've put in a.
What what facade is that, sorry?
The back.
This is on the north side, north facade.
That's the back of the house.
No, that's the side, actually, sorry.
I just can't read this.
Do we have it?
That thing is above the proposed, correct, right, a great mental addition.
Yeah, there it is.
Right. Or out the rear. The. Second floor addition out to the rear over a front, over a first floor porch addition.
Yes.
So that corner of the house is substantially larger. But the the front's very sympathetic to the architecture, right, and the wings drop back, so wings on a primary center structure, that's probably how it would have happened. Well, but then it, then the whole back. Built and and it looks, you introduce a very large gable out the back, which the existing. And the height of the ridge is continuous from the existing ridge, so that is a.
Yes.
Right, so that's a very massive. Addition. Typically, the board is looking for any extension, any addition to an existing house. To drop down below, and extends out so that you can still see. The appearance, the massing essential of the original house. And not allow it to become absorbed or subsumed into the new. So if you compare what's existing at the top.
Yep.
With what's proposed at the bottom, I think it's very difficult to see the existing house in that lower. Simply because it's so large, and it it doesn't, it's not subservient to the existing. That's the link, if you will, what's the expression? So.
Given the addition is over existing.
Because there's nothing to do with it, I'm talking about the second story.
Yep.
And the roof, which is enclosing an attic, all of that volume, the massing and the scale of that, has nothing to do. With what you're building on top of, the point is that. The that nineties addition, oh, the flat roof guy.
Yeah.
You can still very clearly see what your house was, still there. So by building off and out on top of it, and bringing your new construction up to the level of the original, original house.
Yeah.
Uh you 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 lose visually what that original house was.
So I'm trying to, you know.
I mean, that's the concept.
Okay, the thought of, so my thought of trying to unify the side. By using the existing scale, which is of the existing dormer there.
Okay, so you're, right, so you're.
So I'm trying to sign.
Okay.
But I should try to blend the thinking architecture for the new. So I guess it really, I guess to your point, it's not really subservient, we would try and mimic the the.
Correct. Well, supposedly, you can't see it anymore.
Yeah.
You know, what you're saying is you want to take the vocabulary of the existing house and use it in the new. Work, so that's kind of a given, okay? But after you go then, the scale of what you've spent, build kind of essence of it. And the way in which it relates to the existing should. Leave that old house visually apparent, and the new work. Clearly less in size, scale, et cetera, so that you, so that you can see what the old house was. And and by simply using the vocabulary, the architectural vocabulary, this is how, and making it points to big, does not do that. If. Does something else, it gives you a larger house with the same architectural vocabulary, which you can no longer see what the old house is.
We haven't added a lot of square footage to the house.
I don't know what you're adding, I'm looking at it visually and aesthetically, which is what's important, you know, they're not here with a slight vocabulary.
Yeah.
You're looking visually at what the impact of the visual effect is. Try not to see the old house in.
This is also the rear of the house.
But from the street, you couldn't see much of what's added on this act of the second floor.
Well, if you're reading code.
Because from the street, it's gonna look very, very much.
Okay, so this board's here.
Well, we were most focused on was the the appearance from the street and what you would see.
Right.
And so all, really, almost all of the thing we've done is sort of adding on to what's already there.
Right.
And in the back of the house, where you're not gonna see much of it from the street at all.
Well, you might not, but this code in this village, unlike other villages. This code specifically says what can be seen from neighboring properties. It's not just what's within the public view, which would be the street, but it is what can be seen from all persons.
Yeah, I had written down um second story addition affects historically um. Noted jerkin head roof on west, south, and north elevations. And that seems to be on Palmer Terrace, especially um. Every house, not every house, but most houses there um. Have that jerkin head roof, and it seems to be like a special like treasure of Palmer Terrace, yeah. Um so I wouldn't want to. Lose that from any angle.
This is kind of a guiding principle of.
Is during that roof that elevation.
In the code is to make the scale of what you're proposing. Smaller, subservient to the existing, so that you visually can see the foundation.
What's the square footage?
If the existing, this is nineteen ninety one. Right, eleven, twenty, twenty eight, yeah, twice existence. There's a lot of. Five seven, five, five six, four, six, four, six fifty seven.
I was just saying, the new public hearing. Thank you.
So the jerkin head roof is that shingle triangle that comes down? And that um happens on the facade, but it also happens all the way around the house, and then.
So if we replicated that on the backside of the house.
I think you are replicating it in your.
Well, we have that house in the flush wall, but if we did that. If we replicate with that, mirror, did a mirror image on the back of the house, would that address it?
Well, I'm.
The height of what you're wanting to build is too great. The ridge. Of the new should be lower.
We we we, so we can do that.
Okay.
Uh and.
Hmm.
It's just gonna, it's gonna look a little more.
Basically.
It's gonna look more like a vision than, I was hoping like.
Well, that's the point, it should look like a vision. What you're doing here is transforming an existing house into another house, and so now, whether you're walking around the back, wherever you are, doesn't matter. And product is a different house, it's a new house, it has used the vocabulary of your life, was there.
Yeah.
But we don't know what was there anymore, because it's a new house, it's like a, it's like a basic. Concept. That you that you were. And that ridge height of that of the new should be like, not just six inches, we're talking. Visually.
It's a historic house.
Oh, and I bought it because it is, and I love it because it is, and I think we're trying to do everything we can to preserve the historic nature of it, I'm sort of, I I I'm I'm just confused, because.
Well, because you're preserving.
If I, I mean, if I add an addition on the back that changes the height of it, seems like then it becomes really obviously.
No, so I think what they're saying is, um, so this building has a mass and sits there, and it's got these hip. Roofs on both ends.
Okay.
Even though it's short. And then you're gonna add on to, fine, add on to it, but you should either still see part of the original mass. Or the continuation has to like match the mass, but it's easier to keep the mass and continue. Something slightly different, you don't wanna see it, you wanna see, you have all of it, all.
And part of it, I know. That's that's, that's what we tried to do, we tried, we used the existing grid.
Yeah.
To be honest, uh, I I'm not following where we're going.
This is, this is the.
I'm not.
The very back of the house. Okay, so.
And so I so.
So I'm gonna, so you're not following, but you're not.
I'm trying to enhance my system. I'm not, but you need to make it understandable for both the applicant and the architect.
The architect understands, there's a ridge on this house, which is a short ridge that turns into hips. They're adding on to the back and extending that ridge twice the length of the building, so now you suddenly have a long ridge with a large gable. There's no long ridge and large gable.
Which is, which is hard to map this.
Right.
Right, so you're.
Well, I'm 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 not, I'm not trying to deceive you, I'm trying to add some space to themselves, and we're trying to do it in a way that is as.
Right, is that right?
Yeah.
So it's here already.
Literally intrusive and respectfully, you know, technically of your architecture, we go.
So they're 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 adding.
They're adding.
You were off your.
Right, right.
I don't know how to add space, I mean, let's tell you, I can't add space.
That is substantial.
But again, if you think about.
No, we're not saying that.
I don't know how to space that.
And so every project that comes.
And this is still gonna be wasted.
Many times, furniture.
So it's really just.
That addition by definition must be subservient.
This is wasted.
To the existing, not use the vocabulary of bringing a new house has the same features as the old.
Well, sorry.
No, uh, excuse me, we're saying the same things over and over again, can we just table this?
Oh, Jesus, no, it just went through, we just did that. And I was hoping to repeat again, but that house. It's from that, so, but I thought this was gonna be. I'm I'm I I hope John does understand, because.
Well, the moral of the story is, we, once you add on to the original structure. You're changing what is so special about it, which is these roofs. And once that's renovated and added on to that original structure that is a treasure on Palmer Terrace is lost. So what would be more appropriate, which I'm not saying you should do, but adding like a, an addition to the back that we're not gonna see. That. Doesn't, that if you, once finished, if you you removed that addition, this house is still intact. And as it it's historic quality remains.
And let me see if I can, maybe I can articulate it, so it is as though, so you you.
It's just look this.
You you make this, you make this.
Don't want to add a square box on the back of the house?
Well, no, 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 that's not what, that's not what they're saying, that's not what they're saying.
I'm not saying that, I'm just.
It is that the next owner of this house could remove the changes that you've made and restore the original house.
But it's not the original house, because the previous owners have already added on this back extension that we were trying to absorb into the house. That we were trying to absorb into the house and recapture it. I mean, I think what John did was he took this strange addition they added, I'm assuming with your approval, and. It's an awkward kind of one port flat.
Well, no, that way for seats.
That was done prior to this.
Not this work, but I assume they got approved as a history of the house maybe at some point, but they added on, so we were trying to.
Maybe.
Well.
I think.
Incorporate into it.
I think it's important to say that the, there's an appreciation for using the language. That it's not about um adding a box or anything that you wouldn't like. But it is about just what everybody is saying, that the entire house as it once existed is some, is more or less apparent. When you add it on, whether you, I mean, some people would make a bridge and then put it on the dish, and I'm not saying we should do that, but. It's not about the quality of what your architect has done, because he's tried to do something, it's just not in the spirit as we're explaining. Of what happens in this village with preserving historic properties. It's not that you can't do it, you can do it. That's what we're here to assist in.
We're not criticizing the design, we're just, we're trying to explain that you must be able to remove it for the next owner.
Uh-uh, not at all.
And and return the house to what it was. Am I correct, Zach?
Well, that's the.
The idea.
The general sense of it, yes, but another way of looking at it is that. You're not preserving the old house by absorbing it into something much larger in which you can no longer see what it was. That's not preserving it. It may be structurally, it's in there somewhere, but that's not preservation. Preservation is you can see. The existing house when you drive by. And if you wanna make it bigger, because the basement's not deep enough or the whatever, whatever, then those additions. Must be made in such a way that they don't transform the existing house into something else, where you can no longer see what it, what it was. That's, it's not, that's not this kind of preservation.
So is the commentary on the architecture, on the scale, or both?
Both.
My commentary is on.
The scale is too long.
Maintaining the historic integrity of the house and that second floor addition.
Yeah.
And it's not a commentary on the architecture, the quality of the architecture at all, that's actually what, it's a comment on our village.
So what is the scale that would be, I want John to come back.
The roof line, the massing, the massing of the roof that's proposed on the rear addition. Does not, is not similar to the massing of the original group.
So you you were here for the. Comments on uh.
Rysen Street.
On Rysen, right?
Yes.
Look. From John, I know John.
You've sat through that, right?
Of course, I was.
So basically.
I I I couldn't agree more with your comments on that. I didn't see anything.
But that's basically, we're trying to translate the same thing to your house, so drop that ridge line and then, you know, and if anybody can do it, I I know John can.
Yeah.
Can be cabled.
Thank you for your patience.
I motion to table thirty two Palmer Terrace.
Second.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, God.
Uh.
One five two division.
And we thank you all for your patience. Anybody have food with them?
One five two Division Street.
Hi, Andrew Smith here, Green Logic.
Hi.
How are you?
All right.
So this was um an application put in in twenty twenty four. Um, we did have solar panels facing. On the south roof that were visible from the street. The board in twenty twenty four did approve unanimously, but surreptitiously, the concept of the solar there. But suggested that the owner go for a variance. Um, through the variance, that didn't pan out, um although we went to the National Historical Society. So he has removed the offending panels that are facing south. Um, so that it is in compliance with what the board would be looking for. So we've removed, I believe there's twelve panels from the south surface that were pulled out of the application. And we're now just looking to get approval for the existing, which are not visible by the street and not to be seen by. Any of the neighbors based on the angles and where they are on this renovation.
Mr. Smith, can you tell us the the uh the two panels to the left, right? What, how do you, what is the angle of that? Is that a flat roof?
Um, that is not, there is a pitch to that roof. Let me pull that up for a second and see on my side of things, if I can get the exact.
It's not distinguished from, that's why it's hard to tell.
Yeah, the, you know, what, you wanted a, you, um, it was requested that the picture, that the panels be superimposed. On a Google Earth shot and the house has been on to construction for so long that that was the picture that we actually had. Um, from Google Earth that we were able to uh to put it on. So if I'm looking at this with the revised layout. Okay, they are. It's about a thirty five degree pitch facing west. Then there's a flat surface and. Another surface that also um faces west. So basically it works out to the same, I know it's a, an interesting angle there. But if you take a look at. These um, the the panels that we'd be closest to Division Street, right, that have a angled roof facing away from Division. Similarly, those panels are broken and facing in that direction as well. There's a, a, there's a break um across the roof. If you look at the neighbor to the north and you look at that row of windows on their back porch. Or that back extension, right by that first window, closest to the main part of the house, you can kind of see that there's a. A break in the roof.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, so they're facing similar to the, to the, the uh array of panels that are closest to Division in that general area or angle, I should say.
Um, I have a suggestion, because I know that this is a contentious subject having. Um, solar panels in the historic district. Some people feel feel very passionately about it. Um, and. I wonder if it would be possible for you to physically demonstrate on the house. To scale, just like painted pieces of plywood or something. Exactly what you're proposing, because then we, the board and 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 neighbors can see. The actual impact of what you're proposing, because it's always difficult to. Get a real idea from renderings or drawings. Um, and I think that that would. Make the decision process a lot quicker.
Well, um. Not that it's not possible, but we are running up against a extremely tight timeline here based on the. Big beautiful bill that was passed um January fourth, that now negates the thirty percent federal tax credit, so we have to have these panels installed by twelve thirty one. And operational in order for them to.
December thirty first.
I'm sorry.
December?
December thirty first, but our schedule right now, as of now, is completely full and we need to get through then the next board meeting and then push back. The schedule that we have them for the installation into, we've sold about thirty. Um, thirty different projects in the last thirty days because of this impact that it has on the solar industry. Um, and while we're trying to do the right thing and, you know, be green and do do wonderful things, it's kind of tough. So. You know, the rear facing ones are, I'm trying to just explain that the the ones closest to Division are facing directly into the backyard, the one obviously on the flat roof in the middle. Can't be seen from anywhere but a drone. Um, and then the other two, although you can't see it on the white roof, are facing in the same direction, orientation with the same pitch as the forward one.
Yeah. I I, you know, I walked this.
I have a question about why the one, by the. One on uh, one the, along the ridge closest to Division Street, why that doesn't ru- run along the entire ridge?
We'll consult.
Because there's a, there's another break in the roof to the lower right hand corner of it.
Okay, oh, I see, okay, okay. So there, so that's the entire area, those black.
That's it.
Red channels, that's it?
Yep, we are, we are required by code, fire code, to be eighteen inches down from a ridge, we have to be eighteen inches in on both sides of a valley. So wherever it's possible, we have maxed out the ability to put the solar panels and this is the legal maximum. Based on the other restrictions, not the, not the ARB restrictions, but the fire code restrictions as to where they can be placed on the roof.
I I would like to move that we accept this.
I, yeah, I agree.
I I'd like to move that we uh uh issue a bit of appropriateness for this.
I second. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
Can I abstain?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I appreciate it.
For application, my excuse. Literally, I'm looking at this, no other.
Yeah, go ahead.
But we'll miss you.
Can you, can you send over some burgers?
Yeah.
We'll miss your stentorian tones.
Forty four Robison.
Are you signing, right? Oh, you're not signing. Did you abstain? Who signed?
I abstained. So. Derek can sign.
So we know how you look, so.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Sure. Uh, hello, my name is Josh Paul, I'm the general contractor representing uh forty four Robeson Boulevard. First, how's it going, guys? Wow, no worries. Yeah, essentially, forty four Robeson Boulevard, it sits at the bottom of uh Lighthouse Lane, it's a big hill right in front of it. There's a lot of drainage problems that come all the street down that building. The grade of the property also runs from the front of the property directly down, so essentially the house kind of sits in a big hole.
Yeah, we saw it, yeah.
All the neighboring properties look down on it. Um, we're not proposing to try to add a second story, we simply would like to add three feet to the top of the existing foundation. To help with some drainage problems, because upon inspection, I noticed that the seal plates have had some water damage from the water flowing directly onto the foundation.
Yeah, when I reviewed this, I wrote. Fine, but ask about materials. Are the, you're uh, are you changing the siding?
Yeah, so currently the siding is a bright red asbestos uh shingle, doesn't fit the neighborhood whatsoever. All the other nearby homes are cedar shingles or horizontal siding. Um, which simply wanted to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood, so we can raise the value of the property to match all the others nearby.
Yeah, so there are cedar shingles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, there's actually one or two nearby that have the exact same setup, where it's a cedar shingle. Uh, ranch above and then exposed lower level stucco with either a walkout or a garage door.
And uh, what is the material of the railings?
Uh, the railings currently?
No, the, that you're proposing.
Oh, um, so around the deck, yeah, so currently there's a, there was a walkway um that was there for the past homeowner. Uh, that was just for wheelchair accessibility. We're gonna be removing that, so there won't be any walk, any walkway along the front. Uh, we were gonna replace the deck with just a, just a standard cedar uh decking and railing as well.
Did you say you were gonna raise the house enough so that there would be an exposed stucco foundation? Is that what you're proposing?
Uh, yeah, so there will be three feet of stucco foundation from the grade up. Currently, the top of the foundation is just about eight to ten inches uh right above the grade. So it's, it's, you know, it's hitting water basically when the water.
So are are you're painting the stucco?
Uh, yeah, we were gonna plan on just doing um maybe a light gray or something very uh easy, very relaxed, neutral, neutral.
My only um qualm is that the, I don't know if they're aluminum or steel, the the railings just feel very like corporate. And not residential, um but if it's for accessibility, then.
But there, he's gonna remove them.
Oh.
No, we were planning on continuing to just do with cedar, so everything is cedar between the decking is cedar, the railings around the current deck. Uh, there's two decks, there's a walkway in front, which will be removed, but then there's also a deck alongside.
So this right here, the railing up there kind of looks metal right there, is that being?
Well, it, it was currently wood, but it's all being removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's going to be?
Just uh actually just a walkway, just loose stone steps.
So it's not, we don't need a railing.
Oh, the railings aren't even gonna be there.
It's no longer necessary, the current homeowner, uh, does not need wheelchair accessibility.
Okay, cool.
So that runs. And what about the windows and the?
Uh, the windows, we were planning on improving them, but staying with double home, just simply to get a better thermal value out of the windows. Uh, just your standard white exterior, white interior, Marvin four hundred series or Marvin holiday series, right?
Cool.
Does it say swimming pool?
Yeah, you're adding a pool.
That was what I was gonna get to.
Where's that?
So on the survey, um, I have one here, if you don't have it.
Yeah, I don't have one.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we'll pass along, thank you.
Yeah, so uh it meets setbacks from the backside of the property as well as the, the separate systems, so they're gonna be far enough away.
Fifty five thirty.
Oh, it's more, it's a bigger loft than it.
Yeah, we saw this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, descending the grade is.
Uh-huh.
Uh. Serious talking, turn her off.
You guys have thoughts, comments, cons?
Yes, the grade, the grade drops substantially. Do you know what the difference between this is just? Question, uh, the grade drops substantially from, from Robeson down to the rear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably a twenty five foot grade change from the road all the way to the back.
Wow, yeah, yeah.
I apologize, I don't have the top of the ground.
That's it, you're fine, no.
I wasn't prepared.
Uh, motion to approve forty four Robison?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Oh, thank you guys so much. And hopefully everybody can say anything that sounds good issue.
Yeah, right?
The moral of the story is present when we've been beaten down.
All right.
That's funny.
Good for you. Four one four main, right? What, there's more?
No, I don't think, is there? Oh, there's, there's a gentleman.
No, no, I'm in a discussion, I'm very tight discussion.
Okay.
For a discussion, I'm sure, um, Jimmy Charles, yeah. We are discussing, discussing on fourteen Main Street.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we stored the strength, um, this sort of. By beginning of the.
So this is?
And what we're saying is renovate, well, um, it's like to install a swimming pool. And we're considering um an ADU additional unit of desk for, for. Um, on the property, which is a huge type of architect. Who will refuse himself and. Run with the plans, so I'm, I'm just. They, uh, found that's.
Let's have it. Let's have it. Done. Just had it.
Fellas, please?
Yeah.
Yes. They can hold on to these for future reference, so they don't have to. Right? Would you want this?
So. Hello?
Ready, open. We saw a lot filed, we've been a designer, uh. This house is on Main Street. And it's on Sag Harbor. Right now, it's, uh. Still is run down, it's, uh, it's got a vinyl, vinyl siding. In front, the, uh, front landing, uh, just pressure, pressure treated wood. Walling. The garage in the property is, uh, very dilapidated, it's going to be removed. And inside the house, uh, the layout. Looks like the house was added to at one point, yeah? Use different type of roof, flat roof. How we, uh, mainly structured the house as, as a gable. So what we're proposing now, this, the lot is only fourteen, fourteen thousand square feet. And it's a long, narrow lot. And it also has, uh, Main Street on the front. And Dartmouth on the rear. So it's further approached by setbacks for the, for both, both the front and back. So what we, what we wanna do is we wanna take the house and wanna make it, uh. Make it very presentable for the village. Uh, we want to, uh, be keeping the, the front. Gable of the house, the only thing that we're doing too is we're gonna add a. A front covered porch to give it some, some look. Instead of right now, which is flat, of a fence, with a, uh, very poorly constructed, uh, landing. And since we're limited, uh, it is on this property by, by setbacks, we're limited by. Uh, pyramid law, we're limited by, by height restrictions. We basically are using the available space. To create. A functional house. And the roofs, uh, that are in on the addition are. Their, the additions narrower. The roofs are all the same pitch as the existing house. Uh. The interior, we're trying, what we're trying to accomplish is, uh. To have a, a really functional living area, dining, kitchen. And then we made master suite on first floor. And on the second floor, where we have two bedrooms right now and a bath. We were proposing to. Convert one of those bedrooms into an office. And then use the, uh, back additional area to add. Uh, two bedrooms and, and two beds, so it would be a total of four bedrooms. The house, the, the entire square footage, uh, existing and proposed is about thirty-five hundred square feet. Uh, we, we kept the house within all the setbacks. Uh. And I think it's, uh. It's, it's, it's a good use of the property. It makes the house a lot more functional, makes it much more presentable for the village, at most. Uh. The house right now has vinyl siding, we're gonna, going to do, uh, some type of, uh. Fibers, cement type of, uh, type of siding, polyester, actually. We've got a couple of different products there, but. Looks like a lot. Fine siding. But it's, it's, it's way more. Uh. Same thing with the, all the, all the trim will be VersiTex, looks like wood, it's very durable, very attractive. Uh, we're using the Anderson four hundred windows, double hung, very similar to what's there now. Uh, we actually. In the rear section, we're actually dropping down, uh, two feet, actually sixteen inches. We're actually trying to tuck it in behind the existing house. Uh, from, from the, uh, road. Uh, the addition should not really be as apparent at all. The roof, we're going with a, uh. Cedar roof, where now it's just asphalt roof. And, uh. The ADU, we're, we're proposing have the same type of siding and, and metal, if it's coming on tracks. So, you know, basically what we're trying to do is trying to take the property. That is now in a, in a very, uh, disordered condition. Take the house, if you kind of. Kind of designed, kind of weirdly over here, that it's like, it has, had, had issues still with. Try and organize it and try and make the whole structure functional. Uh, trying to use the, uh, the area that we, that's available to us by code. But we really need that space to make the house usable. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
What's the square footage?
Square footage is three thousand one hundred.
What is it presently?
Present is, uh, present is about sixteen hundred.
So it's essentially double?
Yes, I wrote very large addition. Um. But I will tell you that. The overall appearance from the street of your design is much. More attractive than what is there currently.
Oh, yeah.
Um. And I, it does feel a little like gussied up with all the shutters and the larynx and the copper gutters and, you know. Uh, yeah.
How old are you?
What am I becoming? Um.
That's a nineteen fifty.
So I also.
You used your words.
I also don't love. The fact that you're using like poly-made materials. Um, but we are outside of the historic district. Um. So those are my thoughts.
What is this, um, it, the foundation or base is, is it laid bricks or is it a veneer, what is it?
No, it's actually, uh, let's see, the existing foundation is, uh. There's actually two different foundations still, I think the original foundation, brick, uh, it's a brick block.
Hmm.
And then the addition that was put on it was the board. And we're, we're proposing, uh, a board foundation. The same, the, the basement is unusable. In some like, it's like a failure, failure of seventh floor.
But this, I'm, I'm really talking about this elevated porch in the front, is it, is it like, is it brick, it looks like. Or is it a vene, brick veneer?
I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be stucco. It's going to be, uh, gonna be stucco.
But in the, in this rendering, it's, it's brick.
Yeah.
It's always bricks.
Yeah.
The data renders properly, but, okay, I went through that, I went through, no, this, this would be, I would be, it's, it'd be just a, a stucco. Uh, you know, new stucco.
Yeah.
Okay.
Better choice, yeah.
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 Um. Yeah, I think you're on the right path.
Yeah.
I think maybe simplify in the accessories of the structure. Um. And I understand you're trying to make as. Much space as you're allowed. Um. I don't know.
I think maybe in, instead of, uh, cable railing.
Yeah.
Ballisters. Maybe?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah. And that's the only thing I, you know, other than that, I think you've taken, you've taken a rundown. Roach motel and.
Is that a technical term?
No.
Better than, better than decent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You really have to go to, um, Harvard City, oh, not Harvard City, for the house, but to the ADU and the. Um, and we also have to go to, so we don't have to put this on the board. I need to come here, come here. But you have to go, you, you have to take, you have to take this back for then, let's get some facts for the ADU.
So are we gonna consider the ADU tonight or not, I mean, or?
Well, no, this is a discussion.
It's just a discussion.
Okay. Oh, of course, sorry. I'm getting the hang of it.
Okay.
I think it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night. You guys choose.
And one was left standing.
Well, just give him one more.
One-six-seven E Street.
If you pull up my PDF, I'm gonna march through it page by page succinctly and methodically. My name is Oliver Franklin, I'm the architect representing the owners of one sixty-seven Bay Street. Um, they are current residents of Shelter Island, but are relocating to Sag Harbor with their young family for more school options. If you don't have it, I have.
I have that.
Um, I am here tonight early in the process, we have just completed schematic design, we've developed a vision for the project. But we, um, and we wanna discuss with you, introduce you to the existing conditions of the site. Discuss with you our proposal to demolish the existing house. And preview the schematic conceptual design for the project we would be bringing to you in the future. At the beginning of our marathon in terms of the finished process and want your feedback, uh, sooner than I'm aware. Um, the existing house at, uh, one sixty-seven Bay Street was originally part of three lots owned by, uh, Charles and the Brumsley. Um, it got subdivided in nineteen sixty-seven, an application was filed to build a one-story cottage auto lot. Uh, this is a continuous street elevation, we're very hard to see, we're right in the middle there, we're shrouded by a lot of vegetation. Um, the lots one sixty-three and one sixty-nine used to all be conjoined, but, um, have subsequently been developed separately. Next slide. These are a couple of pictures of the house, it's actually difficult to even capture. Um, the backside in nineteen eighty-four, uh, had a dormer, uh, added to it. Uh, the total square footage of the existing house right now is nineteen hundred square feet. Um, next slide. Um, floor plans of the existing, it's two-by-four construction, um, to access the dormer level, they used an attic stair. There's quite a few things that about the existing condition which are not code compliant at the moment, um, next slide. Some elevations of the building, the bitch line of the current building is, uh, twenty-one feet tall. Um, and I'll come back to that in our proposed design at the moment, next slide. Um, the existing non-conforming aspect of the house is that it is pushed, uh, seven, it's seven feet away from the southern lot line. Um, and the rest of this diagram is just an analysis of the, uh, allowable developable areas of the site, next slide. Um, that is also, uh, not compliant in terms of the pyramid. Um, and, and really squeezing the southern side of the lot and not allowing a lot of, uh, daylight and fresh air from that side as well. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, um, so you're proposing to demolish the existing house? And we are proposing a new strategy for the site which would be, uh, zoning compliant. Um, no variances are requested, I should note that the existing pool that's there was built in two thousand and five and it's going to, we, we intend to keep it. So that's, uh, part of an existing condition. Um. We have the existing main house, uh, setback thirty-five feet from the front yard, um, and there's also an accessory building. Um, the clients work from home, it's a work-from-home, uh, space with a bathroom. Next slide. Um, you can keep going to the next one, brown floor, second floor illustrates the beginning of the site strategy and the massing strategy. The volume whose roof you can see in the lower left corner is the public living area. And is set at that thirty-five foot setback, but it is another twenty feet, um, to the second volume that's behind it. Um, so we've been trying to break down the mass of the building, um, and keep it kind of nestled in the site, next slide. Uh, we are proposing a basement, um, not habitable, but a plenty of basement to go along with this. Next slide, this is an initial sketch, uh, this is a modest modern village house, um. And, um, this is, uh, illustrating, uh, a highest ridge line here of approximately, uh, twenty-two and a half feet. For the further setback volume, um, the existing ridge line I was mentioning is twenty-two feet. Next slide. We've been playing with the section to find creative ways to give, uh, apropos some of the other conversations that today, to give volume to the house. So the public area has this fourteen and a half foot space which feels quite gracious, but then we've stacked bedrooms, um, and other such things, uh, in creative ways to. Keep the scale of the house down. Excellent. Um, just some statistics, uh, the proposed house is, the proposed, uh, schematic design is three, is just over three thousand square feet. The accessory building is four hundred and sixty-two, um, a lot coverage of two thousand five hundred and eight. Um, total coverage three thousand eighty-eight, we can go back to that if you guys want to discuss. Next, um, just a couple of, uh, character references for materials and scale of building. This is a village-sized modern house, uh, is the concept. Uh, these are a couple of images of natural cedar siding, um, some glazed elevations with a combination of punched window openings for bedrooms. Next slide, these are just references, um. And a couple of wall fences, and the last, hey, this is early schematic designs, this is not a final proposal, but these are early in, uh, renderings of, uh, the building that we're proposing. So from the, uh, from Bay Street, next. Um. From the driveway, that front volume is the living space, um, and. That's the suite.
Is it too early to just ask you what you're thinking about the condo, you showed it some village modern that have cedar siding?
Yeah, uh, it's not true, but those are meant to provoke.
Cedar siding, cedar siding, flat?
Yeah, there's, uh, we're talking about shiplap cedar siding.
Okay.
Um, and we're looking at natural weathered cedar, which I think is the front iron. But the existing house, there is something about the existing house which charms me, which is that it is stained very dark.
Dark gray and now the house.
It is really hiding in the vegetation and this is part of our inspir, I'm interested in, uh. I'm inspired by that, so we are also interested in looking at a more darkly, not black, but more darkly stained house that might blend further into the vegetation around it. And we're looking at even Joe Tyre did the landscape design in two thousand and five, and we're looking at sort of moving some of that vegetation closer to the street to give some privacy there, but, um.
What, what year is the, the house you're demolishing and is, is it, 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 what, just what's the thinking about demolishing?
It's nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Um, the interior layout is very dysfunctional, um. Mostly in terms of access to the second floor, which is only dormered on the backside and uses a former attic here.
That's that, yeah.
Um, we did consider at first, uh, we, we looked at plans to add an addition, which would have. Presented many of the discussion items you were having earlier today about the scale of the addition being near, like, quite close in scale to the existing house. And frankly, we didn't think that the existing house had enough integrity to go through the contortion. Cost and effort to, uh, to present it to the street and find a way at its modesty to be subservient to it at the same time, so.
You're picking up the language.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so, so it is something that we, we considered, and, and that's why I'm here really is to, is to discuss that, that very specific issue, which was that. Uh, we would like to demolish the house.
But it's not, the house isn't rotting, it's not like.
My house is not rotting, it, this lot suffer, it is, uh, quite challenging in terms of some water issues. Um, we are taking on water from Bay Street and it runs through the property out to Hipper Beach. Um, so yes, there are some water issues existing in the current house and the quality. And the quality of the construction being two by four framing, et cetera, uh, in nineteen sixty seven, the uh, construction is, is uh. It would actually take a great deal of effort to uh, to, to, a great deal of cost and effort to invest in. Uh, in preserving it while doing a substantial.
How do you, what, what kind of structure do you propose? Because you are in a flood zone, rising seas, I mean, what, you know, very flat, sandy.
Yeah. So I can tell you to the uh, the, to the extent that has been discussed thus far, I mean, for that basement. If the clients wanna use it, will likely need to be, need to be hydrostatic.
Yeah.
Um, so we are looking at investing in this, you know, jewel box in that way, like find a way to fight the water. And have a basement that's protected, um, and um, and we will, a, a, and that, that's, that's really.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a lot of glass on your house and um. It's a complete change from what was originally there. Um, from like a tiny little, almost like secret house, now it's like you're inviting everyone in. Um, and it's, it's not a historic house, but you are in the historic district and um. There's just. There are, there's a guide from the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation Historic Preservation about compatible new construction. Um. And this feels disharmonious to the street. Um. Given it, just given its aesthetic, um, and there are ways to do a modern. Flat top house with glass, but that glass maybe comes to the back more, so, um, and. Uh, I, I would suggest that you look at that um, guide that's on the New York State Parks.
And it's specifically the front elevation, yeah. Um, that makes sense and certainly based on everything I've been hearing. Um, and, and I think what I'm hearing is look at that guide and take some cues from that, it's, it's less specifically. It's quite a um, a tapestry of, there's a lot of variety in, in the immediate area, including the white flowers and black windows on the corner and things like that.
Yeah, but.
It's less about architecturalism and more about.
It's more about, it's more about the historic, like you're supposed to be. Hmm, you're in the historic district, so what does it say? Uh. To ensure that new construction within or adjacent historic district is compatible with existing historic properties. So, yeah, that one on the corner, that's clearly new and huge and. It's the, this, the term I was gonna say before is like bloated tick.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that's like a trend. That's happening, um, and.
Something part of your, uh, you were gonna say that before in reference to this front, but.
I was.
Tell me what you mean by bloated tick, I saw some of them, can I?
No. I think so much it, but that one, that white one on the corner, like two doors down from this.
Yeah, exactly.
Has that.
Be, because um. I, I could totally work with that, I, uh, and whatever, this is just my word, but like. It is all about scale and proportion here, like every, like we've put a lot of thought into how to break down the mass and how to nestle the bottom volume to like set things back. So you're never reading it as one giant chunk and the glade, uh, evaluating glazing on the front, I guess.
How, how far back from Bay Street is it?
It's thirty five feet.
And, and.
Yeah.
And is the current houses closer to the base?
The current house is approximately the uh, the same location.
Oh, it is thirty five back, okay.
Yeah. Um, and, and actually now that you're saying that, part, part of the response was like the current houses. You can't even see, I, I, you can't even see it, so you can't see out of it, perhaps I overreacted and.
But you use.
Just because the front wall is quite nice and, and that's the daylight, south and west is coming from across the street. So we do wanna invite that into some of the public spaces.
Yeah.
But of course, your back of your house, you see Havens Beach.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
So you would orient it glasswise to the rear?
It, yeah.
You would then want to orient it.
We are also oriented glasswise.
Toward the water.
Could you take us to a, to the first floor plan or site plan? We are also oriented uh, to the rear and for me, it was initially, and I think before I started thinking about the ARB. Uh, it was initially about like C, yes, that color one's great one, uh. Sorry, go forward. One more. I'm sorry, you're going backwards actually.
Yes.
Um, next, uh, it's a color site plan, a lancher site plan.
That?
Excellent, excellent. There, um, whoops. Initially, we were trying to capture more of the site for the experience of the house, front to back, from the street all the way through Havens. And I think we can still do that and, and.
So the road from the beach goes behind you.
No, it's long, it's, it's a couple houses over, and going alongside.
Like that little stair at the foot of our property has a gate and you can walk out into Haven's beach from there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you're about two or three houses in from the road that goes down to Havens.
Right.
Okay, I look forward to seeing what you bring back to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Great, motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be to two.
You did.